Where's, um, where's Ray, I mean, uh, where's, uh, where's Jamie? I'm not starting without him. I'm not starting without a police officer. Where is he? City Fairview Board of Commissioner meeting, uh, July 1st. Sorry, June. I was skipping a month. June 1st, 2023 at 7:06 PM. Roll call, please. Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson?
Present.
Commissioner Hall?
Present.
Commissioner Street?
Present.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Present.
Mayor Anderson?
Present.
Item number three is prayer and pledge. Commiss- uh, Vice Mayor Butler?
Lord, we're meeting today to cook matters of business. We've got our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech. impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach successful conclusion. Thank you for being your source of guidance today. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we approve the agenda, I would like to add an item to the agenda under Public Announcements, Awards and Recognitions. First Sergeant Turk of the J O R T C here in Fairview at our high school will be presenting the President's Volunteer Service Awards. And, um, that will not take place right now. It will be under that item, which is item number, uh, six, but I just, we have to bring that to everyone's attention and vote to add that.
Second.
Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Street?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Now, I believe I would do approval of the agenda, Mr. Carter? Or does that approve the agenda?
I'm assuming you approved the, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm assuming the intent was to approve the agenda as amended. Was that the intent?
Yes, sir.
Uh, and whoever seconded it, was that Mr. Butler or Mr. Hall? Ms. Street, was that your intent to, as amended? Okay. And everyone that voted it was as amended, correct? Everyone understood that? I think we're fine then. We can proceed.
Thank you. Item number five, Citizens' Comments. These will be limited to three minutes. I want everyone to know that the public hearings, which everyone will, uh, be able to speak at, we don't have a limit and there's no limit to your time, will be before the item that you'd like to speak for. So if you would like to speak at that time for the item, I wouldn't double dip on this. Don't, don't do Citizens' Comments and that. Just wait for the public hearing. Okay?
There's one signed up on Citizens' Comments, Mr. David Dodaro.
Please state your name and address for the record.
David Dodaro, 7551 Cherokee Hills Road, Fairview, Tennessee. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. As a co-chair of the Parks and Landscape Board with Mr. Elmi- Elmer Mobley, we'd like to invite the residents of Fairview out to our next Parks and Landscape meeting, which is this coming Monday night at the Triangle School at Historical Park, 7:00 PM. We are going to begin working on the donor sign and entrance sign to the Treehouse Playground at Bowie Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that all?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Item number seven, Staff Comments and Monthly Reports. 7A, Community Service Report. Mr. Ross?
Good evening. Uh, just to recap on last week's, um, we had the Arts and Crafts Fair at Bowie Nature Park. And then on, um, July the 3rd, we have our, uh, Independence Day Celebration here at, at City Hall. Um, the event starts at 2:00 PM and the fireworks show will, uh, be provided by Fairview Nutrition at approximately 9:00 PM. And also, we have, this coming Saturday, we have Movie in the Park. Um, we'll be showing the movie Toy Story. And also, one last thing, uh, today Williamson County EMA, um, announced that we'll be doing the text to 911 is now available throughout the county. This benefits, um, anyone that is deaf, hard of hearing, uh, or anyone that has a speech disability, or they have a medical emergency. And this also benefits anyone that, um, has an emergency where they're unable to speak, um, during a 911 call. Um, again, that's for emergencies only. Uh, that's all I have, Mayor.
Mayor, I have a question.
I, um, skipped six.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I realized that.
But I still have a question.
Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Richard, uh, I know Tom's not here and I, it was my plan to ask him. Can we approach the real estate company on this field out here to say about getting it bush hogged?
So the, um, the portion where we shoot off those fireworks, um, our Parks Department has already been cutting that.
I know. But, uh, in the past, I have had to get that field, took care of getting it bush hogged. I still have the, the card for the people that done it and we can file a lien against the property, uh, if we can look into that. It would really be nice to have it done, uh, prior to the July 3rd.
Absolutely. I'll get on that.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
So I'm gonna go back to item six, which is Public Announcements, Awards and Recognition. First Sergeant Turk, if you would like to bring your group up here?
If I called them on?
Absolutely. You've got the floor. You do whatever you'd like. I would use a mic. We have a large group tonight.
I'm loud.
Take it out.
You can take it out and hold it.
I just wanted to recognize some students and some parents, um, of the Fairview Junior ROTC program. Uh, I got the opportunity to recognize some of the students earlier at the Fairview High School Awards Ceremony, but I feel like this, I feel like one of the biggest commodities our young people could give today is their time. Young person's time is like gold to them. That's really the only thing they have to give to us. And a lot of J ROTC kids give their time selflessly all the time. So I found a way to give back to them a little bit and say thank you. Just more than just a pat on the back. I would like to do that. Thank you, Mayor and Board of Commissioners. I hope I said that right. For giving me the opportunity.
First Sergeant Turk?
Yes.
Um, we have people at, a lot of people at home who are watching that would probably love to hear this. So the mic will, you can take it out of the holder. Just remove it so, so that our audio will be clear for the people at home. No?
Sorry. Um, so without further ado, I'd like to go ahead and present the awards. The first one is Olivia Britt. Sorry, I'm nervous. Uh, this is the President of the United States Volunteer Service Award. So they have to meet a certain criterion and everything to get this. And then we go in, we put in the hours and then it tells what award they can get and stuff like that. So it's a really huge achievement and something they can put on their resumes for the rest of their life. So, um, the next award, Johnny Jones. Jacob Elefante. Logan Oxendine. Abby Pewett. Gavin Polito. Lucas Casalotto Holmes. Dakota Angel. Caleb C. Rebecca Sexton. Garrick Steinbeck. Okay, so the next group of people I would like to recognize are my parents. Um, we couldn't do anything in J ROTC without our parents. Uh, they, they drive to every competition we have, every community service event, everything we do, our parents are involved. And they just are so selfless and they give back to the community so selflessly. As a program, we've done over 4,800 hours of community service this year so far and our parents are a big part of that. We just don't track them as much as we do the kids, so they get lost and they get forgotten about. So I wanna recognize them publicly and say thank you for all they do. Lisa Beggars. He's nervous still. Tanya Masher. Jewel English. Dana C. Veronica Oxendine. And Gina Jones. Mayor, thank you.
First Sergeant, I'm sure that the newspaper would like to, um, put you, you know, put your group in the paper. This is a big accomplishment. Would you like to, um, have your group come forward so we can get a group picture?
Absolutely. Come on. Hurry up. Parents. Citizens of Fairview, I appreciate your patience.
Congratulations, guys.
Yeah. Congratulations. This was a big accomplishment.
Did you run Sunday or Saturday?
Guys, some of, some of y'all come around the front so that they can get the whole picture. All right. Under 6A, City Events, um, Mr. Ross, do you have anything to add?
No, ma'am, I do not.
Thank you. Item number seven, Staff Comments and Monthly Reports. I assume on A, you've completed what you'd like to say?
The Community Services Report will be Ms. Tati.
Okay. Ms. Tati?
Okay, so for engineering and planning, we've had 19 residential building permits issued in the month of May. We had one pool permit, three accessory structures, two grading permits and three sign permits. Our Planning Commission meeting is June 13th. Uh, we will have five items on the agenda. One rezoning, two final plats, one commercial site plan and one residential site plan. There will be no work session for that. Uh, for our Codes Department, Municipal Inspection Partners has started and they have taken over all residential and commercial inspections and code violations as well. Uh, for Public Works, they've cleaned up and removed two trees from windstorm on Horn Tavern Road. Uh, litter removal on Highway 196 was 18 55 gallon bags. They've also completed the monthly chipper service and finished and restarted the right of way mowing and the weed eating. They've patched numerous potholes throughout the city and they have replaced the speed limit and reduced speed limits ahead signs on Highway 96 and I-40. And that is the end of my report.
Thank you. 7B, Finance Report.
Uh, the Finance Report, Mayor. All of you in your packets should have a list of accounts with the balances shown. If you guys have any questions about those, uh, reach out to Mr. Darty or Mr. Knox and they can answer them for you.
Thank you. Item 7C, um, City Manager Report.
On the City Manager Report tonight, uh, there's just one thing I wanted to remind you of, the budget work session that will take place on Tuesday night at 6 o'clock. Uh, you all should have received a copy of the proposed budget in your emails last week. If you could review that, make a list of questions or concerns and bring those with you to the work session. All of the department heads will be here to answer those for you.
Does anyone on the board have any questions, um, for anything on item seven? Item eight, Consent Agenda. Minutes from May 18th, 2023.
Both approve.
That was a tie. Who's first and who's second?
I only heard Commissioner Johnson, who?
Okay, Johnson, Hall.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Street?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item eight passes 5-0. Item number nine, Old Business. 9A, Ordinance 2023-03, Bell Haven, Major Modification Amendment. We are gonna be, begin with the public hearing. The public will get to speak. Anyone who would like to speak, um, we're not gonna have a time limit on this. Uh, it will, would be nice to not be so like repetitive if somebody else has already made, you know, comment, uh, to the same exact thing that you would like to say. Maybe, you know, leave that part out and say the rest of what you'd like to say. But we do wanna hear from everyone. I do ask that each of you be courteous and respectful when you speak and, um, we have officers in here if we're not. We just, this is a business meeting and we just need to conduct it as so. So if you would, um, like to take turns and come to the mic, the, um, developers and builders will speak at the end.
Good evening, members of the commission. My name is Jason Holloman. I'm an attorney in Nashville. I'm here today on behalf of several of the adjacent property owners. Um, I just wanna point out a, a little bit about the legal framework. I'm sorry. Oh, is it not?
We can't hear you very well.
Okay.
There you go.
I usually have a big voice, but I've lost my voice, so I apologize. Um, a, a couple of points. Uh, first of all, I know that there has been, uh, some advising as to whether or not this decision that you're making tonight is administrative or legislative. I think the case law on that is clear, the City of, uh, Lebanon case that was cited to you, uh, it is an administrative decision, but that is not the same as a ministerial decision. You still have full discretion, um, to examine this, to, to turn it down if you can find basis in the existing framework of a PUD adoption. Uh, your code is very specific in that it says that, um, bear with me, um, Section 10-203.8 provides that major modifications, which this is, uh, as defined below, will be subject to further review by the Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners and will be required to undergo the same review and approval process as the initial application. So all of the discretion and authority that you had in deciding whether or not to adopt this PUD in the first place, when it comes as a major modification, you have that same discretion. And the Court of Appeals in the Burson versus Simpson, or the Burson and Simpson versus Metro case, which is a 1999 case, dealt with specifically that question. And the court determined that in reviewing a PUD amendment, unlike zone districts where specified use classification and activities are deemed permitted by right, under the zoning ordinance, the Planning Commission and the local legislative body are afforded discretion in determining whether particular activities are appropriate for particular planned unit development. And I know that in this case specifically, you're being asked for some variances and obviously that is an area where you have discretion. So I just wanna be sure as you deliberate tonight that we don't get caught up on, on the, the idea of administrative. Administrative is not ministerial. Uh, and in fact, there is case law that says whether it's administrative or legislative, it is basically reviewed by the court with the same discretion which gives deference to your decision. So with that, I hope that when you, when you consider this tonight, you will consider the comments of these other neighbors, um, see that we believe that what's being asked is not consistent with all the requirements of the existing PUD ordinance and you do have a basis that you can turn this down. You have that full legal authority. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Jeff Pape, 7114 Elrod Road, Fairview. Um, so Jason just gave you the legal reasons why you have every right to deny this application. Translating as legalese, if there's any part of the ordinance you don't feel this plan satisfies, all you have to do is, is state that part of the ordinance in your discussion and, and you have the, the right to deny this. Um, so I wanna talk about the plan for a few minutes. So the city attorney's asking you to rely on both he and the staff saying that these plans meet every aspect of your ordinance, every bit of that 412-page ordinance. Um, I could be wrong, but I, I don't believe the city attorney has any training, technical background on reviewing plans, so he's essentially asking you to, to, um, you know, rely on staff that it meets every single bit of the ordinance. So let's talk about that for a minute. So if we go all the way back to August 21, when they first came here and, and came to the city, the staff was correct when they instructed them to come forward with a zoning application. Um, that didn't work out. Um, so then December of last year, uh, an, an agenda item appears on the Planning Commission for reinstatement of a new plan. Um, that didn't make any sense, but it was put on the agenda. Um, everybody agreed it didn't make any sense. There's nothing in the code for reinstatement and there is, um, it just, it's, defies common sense to reinstate a new plan. Um, but the staff at the time was not able to appropriately analyze the ordinance to understand what application even to bring forward relative to this. Um, and then when the discussion was had at the, at the, um, work session that night, a, a week or two later, um, everybody decided it had to be a, a change to the, a modification to the plan. Um, but the staff wasn't the ones that brought up that the code has criteria for major versus minor. One of the board members brought that up and then it had to be read out loud during that. Um, another example where there's been challenges with, with staff is, is when, during the first reading a couple of weeks ago, Commissioner Street asked if, if the applicant has provided all the satisf-, all the requirements to satisfy the list in the code and their response was to turn to the applicant and say, you guys provided everything, right? And they said, yes, and that was it. And that's not how it's supposed to work. The staff should be taking everything submitted, they should be reviewing every detail and they should be confirming that it satisfies every bit of the requirements. So the staff is a recommending body. You guys are the ones that make the ultimate decision. So you guys have to feel comfortable with it. So based on everything I just said, it just seems there, that there's a lot of concern relative to relying on staff that this satisfies every single aspect of the ordinance. So let's talk about the plans themselves. Uh, Section 10-201.1, the general provisions of the PUD section of the ordinance require consistency with the comprehensive plan and area development plans. It says no overlay district development shall be approved unless all the plans, all plans for development are found to be consistent with the then current issue of the comprehensive plan. So also, and when you review the zoning code as well as the 2040 plan, there are 22 different references to plans being required to be consistent with surrounding zoning and land uses and land character. Um, so when you look at the 2040 plan, it's designated as medium density. That's the largest and most broad designation in the 2040 plan. It is the most broadest designation because it's also the largest. It is in lots of different areas. It's here near city center, it's out near the rural areas where this application is. And so it's, it allows for lots of different broad things within, within the, um, the medium density designation. So then how do you have to look at it? You need to look at it and say, what, what drives exactly how this fits into the plan? And really you need to focus on the immediately surrounding areas. So if you start to do that, 90% of the surrounding area of this project is R-40 or five acre minimum lots, 3% is R-20 and 7% is RM-8. So the vast majority of the surrounding properties either R-40 or five acre minimum lots. So this plan clearly doesn't meet the surrounding, um, the consistency with the surrounding area, which is required by the, the zoning ordinance. Um, when you look at the original plan, it's a little misleading because they had a lot of notes on the plan that allowed for smaller lots and, and that's fine, but you guys are being asked to approve the plan now, which you have every discretion to approve a new plan since they opened the door and made the changes. So when you, when you go and measure the old plan versus the new plan, and I measured every single lot, um, they basically had the original plan approved in 2008, had a few lots over 40,000 square feet, 10% of the lots were greater than 20,000 square feet and 30% of the lots were greater than 15,000 square feet. That means they had 40% of their lots, 290 lots were greater than 15,000 square feet, which satisfy R-15. Their current plan has eight lots greater than R-15, 1.6%, and their average lot size reduced, was reduced by 20%. They'll, they'll come in here and point to the fact that they've, they've increased the minimum lot size. Well, that's great. They've significantly decreased the average lot size, which makes it even less consistent than the 2008 plan with the consisting and surrounding zonings. So when you look at the 2040 plan, it is not set up to be a document where you look at this plan and say, can it, it, does it fit in there? Is there any way you can fit it in there? It's not like that with the code. A 2040, the comprehensive plan is designed to be just the opposite. It's intended to guide you guys to decide whether this application fits into it. So it should be you guys looking at it and saying, based on the 2040 plan and all aspects of it, that you need to decide whether or not this plan fits the 2040 plan. And I don't think you guys should be relying on staff for that. You all are familiar with that plan. You all are familiar with that plan. You should make your own decision. So then, let's go to another part of the code, section ten dash two oh six point seven, preservation of natural features. It literally reads mature trees, vegetative cover, watercourses, stone walls, existing relief, and other natural features should all be preserved to the greatest extent possible. So that is part of the code. That's a requirement of all PUDs and and plans relative to PUDs. So let's talk about mature trees and protecting those first. Based on the applicant's submittal, there's a hundred and forty acres of mature forest on this site, a hundred and forty acres. They're saving seventeen acres of that, twelve percent. Why are they doing that? Every single bit of the trees they're saving are protected by either federal or state regulations. So they're not voluntarily saving a single tree on the site. They're just saving the ones that are protected. They're destroying a hundred and twenty-three acres of mature trees. So let's put that in perspective. Think about the City Hall property, the Publix property, including the prop, the parcels in front of it, the library and the land behind it, the industrial entrance to Bowie Park, all the way over to Tractor Supply, jump across the road, include both apartment complexes, keep coming back this way for Autozone, Dunkin' Donuts, McDonald's, that whole shopping center, the Shell gas station, the the Fairview Donuts, the chiropractor in the bank, put all that land together, and that's about a hundred and twenty acres. That's how many mature trees they are tearing down on this site. So then, you also talk about hillside and development and critical lot standards. There are fifty-eight lots on this plan designated as critical lots that will require a variance. They admitted in their plan, they have a note on the plan that says it will require a variance. So that right there is 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 a variance to the plan. Now, talk about submittal requirements real quick. So ten dash two oh three point three, two L, says that one of the, one of the requirements for submittal of a master plan is a list of exceptions or deviations from the zoning ordinance, not from the previous PUD, from the zoning ordinance. When we filed our appeal, Reagan Smith, the engineer for the applicant, provided a letter responding to that, and they admitted that they provided a list of variations to the previous plan, but not to the entire zoning ordinance. And it is clear, I just read you the exact verbiage from the, from the ordinance. One more area that it doesn't satisfy the code and requires a variance, and that's open space. So first, I want to talk about open space because they're, they're, they're very proud of how much open space they're providing. So where does that come from? Thirty-six acres of the open space they're providing is protected by federal and state regulations. They can't touch that land, can't touch it. So you set that aside. Thirty-six acres for the step system, and then another thirty-three acres for detention and grading required for detention. That totals up to about a hundred and five acres. That's forty-two percent of this site. Those are areas that that they're not voluntarily setting aside as open space. That's stuff that they either can't touch or have to have to either provide utilities to the project or to satisfy the the Fairview ordinance. So the code requires ten percent open space, twenty-five acres. And I'll admit, they are absolutely allowed to use every bit of that hundred and five acres for the open space calculations. So they more more than satisfy that. But then you go to section ten dash two oh seven point seven, open space, paragraph four, and after it talks about the minimum ten percent, it goes on to say, at least fifty percent of this land shall be improved open space. And your code has a very specific definition of improved open space. So if you look at the fifty percent of the required ten percent, twelve point six percent of this, twelve point six acres is required for improved open space. Their plan provides less than six. That's more, a greater than a fifty percent variance. And I was generous in that because they have two miles of walking trails, and I gave them twenty feet wide on the walking trails. Realistically, they're probably ten feet wide. You drop that down to ten, and they're down to three point six acres of approved open, of improved open space, which is a seventy percent variance. They have two hundred and fifty-one acres to work with. There is no reason and no justification to give them a seventy percent variance on open space. So that gives you lots of ways which the plan does not satisfy the zoning ordinance. Based on all that, I'm not sure how the city will be able to take a position that you must approve this plan because it satisfies the whole ordinance. The only possibility I can think of is another falsehood that was raised during our appeal hearing about this is somehow a preliminary master plan, and that everything I'm bringing up gets addressed later. The problem with that theory is that the Fairview code does not provide for a two-step master plan process. It is a one-time-only deal. You guys get one shot at this apple, and it is tonight. The only reason it's back here is because they're making changes to it. If they do not change this plan, if you approve it tonight and they do not make subsequent changes, it will not come back in front of you. And I challenge anybody in this room to read the part of the code that requires the master plan to come back before you guys at any point if they do not change that code. The way it's worded is the next step after the master plan is approved is that you go to site development plans, and there is a very different definition of site development plans versus master development plan. So if this master development plan gets approved, it becomes the controlling document, and those site documents are then measured against it. So this is your only shot at this plan, yet you're being told you guys don't really have the right to review it thoroughly and say no. Based on all this confusion and everything, I think there's a few critical things that you guys need to do if you do feel you're you're being forced into approving this tonight. I think you need to add a couple of conditions to clarify things. If 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 you feel like you're being pressured into into approving this tonight, you should at least add a clarification that if this is approved, so that there's no question about it, the approval of this master plan will not grant any variances to the underlying code. They can, you know, you can deal with all those later, the way they're appropriately supposed to be dealt with at a zoning Board of Appeals hearing. Another thing is clarifying that the thirty-foot buffers are undisturbed, that there's a discrepancy in that. The plan says that they will protect, they will save the existing vegetation to the extent possible, but in the letter that Reagan Smith sent to you all as part of our appeal process, excuse me, they said that they are requiring all the vegetation within the buffers to be maintained. So please take them at their word and add a condition that says the buffers will be undisturbed. So we won't be able to speak after the public hearing, but the applicant will, so they'll get a chance to rebut this, and we won't get a chance to get back up and rebut it. So I want to make another point. Please remember that the applicant can get up here and say anything they want tonight to try to get you to approve this. They can literally flat-out lie to you if they want to. I'm not saying they are, but they can do that because what they say doesn't matter one bit. What matters is what ends up on the plan and in the conditions. So please pay attention to that and don't let them fool you because they've already done that throughout this process. At the Planning Commission meeting, one of the commissioners asked if there was any variance required specifically to the critical lot part of the ordinance. The applicant, as well as staff, responded, no, it's not, and those are in the minutes. So that was misleading information. Then, at that same meeting, Mayor Anderson brought up that she remembered, or she remembered that in two thousand and eight, there was statements made that certain amounts of the elevations would be required to be brick. Their answer to that was, well, that never made it on the plan, so if we set it, did make it on the plan, didn't make it as a condition, you can't hold us to it. So that was another area where if it's not on the plan, it doesn't matter what they said in the meeting. And then the final one is the issue of the thirty-foot buffers, that they say that they're protecting all the trees and keeping the existing trees, but the note on the plan clearly does not say that. One last point, I know all of you are very fiscally responsible, and therefore, you're probably tempted by the carrot that they're dangling, that they'll pay for improvements on Northwest Highway. First of all, the condition in the, in the ordinance that that's that's proposed tonight leaves it wide open. They can come back and negotiate, they can come back a month from now and say, we're sorry, our costs are higher than we thought, we just can't pay as much as we thought we were. So you're not locked into anything there. On top of that, without this, without this project, we don't need those improvements on Northwest Highway. Save your money and put it into something here on ninety-six or or on Fairview Boulevard, where we need more signals so we can get out of Tractor Supply on a Saturday afternoon or Saturday morning. So please don't let that sway you guys relative to to the dangling of them paying for that. So again, please don't fall for any of their misleading statements. Please listen to the community that elected you that's here tonight and say no to this plan, and you have every legal right to do so. Thank you.
Hi there. Kip Stewart, seventy-one seventy-three Anderson Road, Commissioners. I'd like to just take a, just two minutes probably total, like to talk to my fellow citizens if I could. Don't want to turn my back to you, but, so I guess I just want to talk real quick about...
Sir?
Yes?
I'm really sorry, but you have to address the board. And everyone can listen.
Absolutely.
Please address the board.
Absolutely. I just want to talk just for two minutes about common sense. We're sitting here tonight, and Fairview, which we love the town and the city, it's a town, city, whatever you want to call it, very small, we're talking about adding over five hundred homes. To me, that's sort of like adding a small town into a, into a town. And my concern is that we're here tonight because it doesn't make any sense to us that live in the area, and that's why we're here. But my question is, is that if the Commissioners lived where we lived, and all of a sudden you were going to put in five hundred-plus homes in this small area where you live, would you really vote for it and say yes? And if you do say yes tonight, I guess the question is, why? What is the the incentive for the five of you to vote yes to add so many homes? We're not talking about five homes, or ten homes, or fifty homes, we're talking about over five hundred homes. And what is the reason beyond that? There has to be some type of incentive for the city or for whoever's voting yes to do that, because again, if you lived where we lived, you wouldn't want five hundred new homes to come up right where you're living here. I assume you all live in Fairview, and you're just fortunate enough that you don't live where we are at. And so I think we have to ask that question tonight as citizens, as to anyone who votes yes tonight, as to why you're voting yes. The last thing I'll say is that D.R. Horton, they're an eight billion dollar company. We're a small city, we're a small town. They could litigate you for years for anything that they want to do. And you can look, you know, it's home builders across the country, like, I'm sure like all home builders, they have class action lawsuits, they have lawsuits in the communities for misrepresentation or whatever, different things that they're being taken to court for. But I I look at, I took some pictures real quick, like on Crowcut Road, right off of ninety-six, about four hundred feet off of ninety-six in Crowcut. If you've ever driven by some of those houses, these people use their front yards as just dumping grounds. It's just incredible. I've taken pictures of it, but I won't share it, but I have them. And I'm thinking to myself, if we can't even take a few homes on Crowcut Road, right off of ninety-six, and, you know, I guess you could put liens on it or whatever you do, if you've even put liens on these properties, and oversight, but these homes, year after year, just look like dumping grounds. They dump garbage and old cars and everything, it's just right out in the front, in their front yards. How are you going to control an eight billion dollar company like D.R. Horton that's going to come in and make all these promises and turn around, and 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 you're going to have the oversight, and you're going to have the legal means to be able to take them to court if they don't do the right things? It just doesn't make any sense to me that we would do this. And I'm just asking tonight that whatever decision we make, or the Commissioners make, it's based on common sense, and it just doesn't make sense. So thank you for your time.
Could I please have those pictures?
Sure. The vegetation grew up, I've noted it, so you can't see it as much as the trees grew up.
Thank you.
If the trees weren't there.
And those homes are in the city limits?
Those homes are four hundred feet off of ninety-six, right where Crowcut, near the Dollar General.
Yeah, they're in accounting. We have no governing authority on them.
Sir, you're going to be talking to the microphone.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Diana Bro. I'm here with my husband, Richard Bro. Our address is seventy-one twenty-six Elrod Road. I'm going to put a little different spin on this because this is coming from my heart to you. It was springtime of twenty fourteen when we first drove down the winding gravel driveway of our forever home. We arrived through a canopy of blooming pear trees and dogwoods. The green of the foliage was the greenest green I've ever seen. God whispered to us, you are home. My husband, Richard, and I had retired, and we decided to move close to family in Tennessee. So we settled into our perfect home on eight point three acres on Elrod Road in Fairview. We're surrounded by fields, hay bales, wildflowers, songbirds, the pecking of woodpeckers, fox squirrels, families of turkeys, deer, and foxes. We have a glorious front row seat, sitting in our rocking chair as having morning coffee, or on a hot day, sweet tea under the porch fans. This is truly our dream nest that we share with friends and family. It is an oasis from busy lives we left behind, and we have never taken it for granted. We have only felt blessed that God brought us to the perfect place to rest and spend our golden years. But now, we're faced with much sadness because things are about to change, and they will never be the same. Upon the approval of Bell Haven, we will begin to see the animals leave, dust flying, trucks coming and going, hammering of wood, all the sounds opposite of peaceful sounds of nature. Upon hearing of the Bell Haven project, we were made aware that the step system would butt up on the western edge of our property. The excess water runoff area would be directly bordering the entire back of our property. We are sitting on a lower level of land, and already, when it rains hard or long, water stands on our back property. To add, to add insult to injury, we were told by someone on the town, town planning and management department at City Hall that we should feel lucky because we will not have any homes being built directly near our property. They said, we won't even know, it's there because the land will still produce hay and be cut and baled, and a new ranch-style fence will surround it. We don't consider having a step system or a water runoff system as new neighbors. The developers will also be placing forest structures that will monitor the step system next to our property. If something goes wrong, alarms will sound. Hopefully, Fairview City will have plans in place to have people trained in step system maintenance. We made a visit to the new Otter Creek neighborhood to look at the step system there. We were disappointed with seeing a huge gravel pit. A homeowner of Otter Creek, walking his dog, came by as we were looking at the step system. We asked, how is the step system working for Otter Creek? He said, often annoying alarms come on in the neighborhood when something goes wrong in the step system, which happens frequently. This was also upsetting to hear. Still, definitely not feeling lucky. We are seriously thinking about selling our lovely, not-so-forever home on eight point three acres. This home has been our anchor, and leaving may well save us from drowning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Deniche Stewart. I am the wife of the tall guy that was speaking earlier with the pictures. And I just want to add to this, because we married about ten years ago, but I moved here in two thousand and four. It was quiet. I'm on seventy-one seventy-three Anderson Road. It is, it is the most beautiful area. Hardly any traffic came by, but in the past ten to twelve years, there's so much traffic going down our road now because they cut through onto Anderson Road to get over to Cox Pike from the interstate. So, okay, fine, and I understand about development. I don't mind development. I mind a step system that may actually be a problem for our wells because we're all, we all have well water. And when I first moved on to the property, one of the first things I did was I put a whole house filter system in because I was concerned about the bacteria that would come from cow manure into my water. Now, I'm concerned about human waste. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kurt Larson, seven one oh eight Elrod Road. My wife and I moved here in two thousand and eighteen from Southern California, small town called Mission Viejo, eighteen square miles, about the same size as Fairview. When we first moved in in nineteen seventy-two, we were younger, obviously, with our parents, population of Mission Viejo at that time was nine thousand. By the time we moved here to Fairview in two thousand and eighteen, population was a hundred and ten thousand. People wonder why we're crazy. Very congested. The highways in the area, the widest point are twenty-four lanes wide, and you still go nowhere. and you still go nowhere because of congestion. About four years ago, the citizens of Williamson County voted to keep construction of new homes in Williamson County at one house per five acres. Citizens of Fairview voted on that, too. The vote passed. And every house in Williamson County that's going to be new is one on five acres. DR Horton's going to put 513 homes on 240 acres. Jeff already made clear exactly what acreage would be used for houses. But at 513, with the average of four residents per house, that's 2,052 additional residents in that area, and 1,026 additional vehicles. At this time, we also have another development going on. Couldn't remember the name of it, but they're already broken ground. Not sure how many houses are going on it, but I just made an estimate of 100 houses. It's a large development, too. That's 400 more residents, and 200 more vehicles, for a total of 2,400 people, and 1,200 vehicles in that area. The population of Fairview, I looked, was 2023, was 10,000 people. That's a quarter of the population of Fairview, basically put on 300 acres. The roads in that area are just two-lane roads. In that area, we have people that still have cattle ranches, horse property. There's tractors on the road, and there's people with their horses on the road, walking their horses, too. All this will cause a lot of congestion. Elrod is only two lanes wide. Crow Cut is only two lanes wide. Dice Lampley is only two lanes wide. Right now, Northwest Highway is only two lanes wide. Anytime we want to go into town, we take Northwest Highway to Cox Pike and come into town. With this many residents, you're creating huge choke points all over in that area. Especially with a signal right here at Cox Pike and the 100. Going down the 96 and the 100, just in four in the afternoon, is already a nightmare from people passing through. Going to get a lot worse. Our houses were, that we all live in, I'm the third owner, I'm not the original, but these houses have been on this land long before this property was ever sold and zoned. DR Horton's attorney told us, in a couple meetings back, that they were entitled to develop their land. Well, we're entitled to have our land protected. So alls we're asking is that our properties be respected, and our lifestyles be respected. Not some developer to come in and tell everybody how they're going to do things. Say, "Just be a good neighbor and protect our land, too. Rezone the property for less development and preserve the natural area." Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Josh Cherry. I live at 7112 Kyle's Creek Drive here in Fairview. I've been here my whole life, just about. So my grandfather lived here, my mom grew up here. Family with a lot of people that live here. So I care a lot about this community. I'm not opposed to growth. I think Fairview's going to grow one way or another. I just think that we need to take in consideration how it grows. And we probably should take in a lot of consideration on how it grows. And think about the natural resources that are in these areas. I mean, you're talking about, you know, 200-plus acres. I mean, are there streams in this? Are there stream buffers? I mean, obviously. Are they asking for variances on it? I'm opposed to variances, highly opposed to them. Let's keep our natural resources protected. I mean, let's hold them to the highest standard that we can hold them to. If they're going to put in a step system, I want to be able to drink the water when it comes out of that step system. And you can do it. You can add UV filters, you can add all sorts of things. I've done a ton of research on step systems lately. And I know that if this passes, I'm going to be fighting the next battle that's backing up to my property on Walker Road. So I'm, and that's another thing, you know, I'm adamantly opposed to these step systems. If we can't find out a better way to serve our community with a sewer system and grow the proper way, then what are we doing? We're just leading down a path of step systems on each one of these large, high-density developments. I mean, it's ridiculous. And you've got people that are backed up to the county, that are on wells, springs, everything else. They can't do anything if you poison their water. If you add E. coli and human feces and fecal matter to their aquifers and their waters, they can't use it anymore. And guess who's going to be responsible for that? The city of Fairview or Dixon, when they come in and have to run water lines all the way down all these property roads, all these county line roads? How much is that going to cost us? You know? We've got to really think about all this. We need to plan it properly. They need to have a planning commission that knows what they're doing when they're looking at plans. You know, you can't just approve things willy-nilly. You've got to know. When I tried to develop the little Wile E. Circle over there, they sent me, you know, Micah and Scott was here, they sent me through the wringer trying to figure out how to do that. I ended up couldn't do it, because I didn't have the money or the resources to do it. And I was asking for 20 homes. And I had set, I mean, I had sewer approved from Dixon. I had it in an email and writing. I couldn't get my stuff off the ground, but we're going to put 520 houses on a property that is going to be just dumping liquid waste right into everybody's wells and springs here? This is insane. But that's all I got to say.
Good evening, thank you for your time. My name's Barton Ash. I live at 7128 Elrod Road. Neighbors of several of the folks who've spoken to you already. And a lot of what I'd like to say would be a bit repetitive at this point, and some of the things that have been said. But I've been privileged to live at that location for over 30 years now, I believe, and was around for some of the original discussions for, when the original development came through on this piece of property there, on the old Elrod place, that it does border my property. Summarize some of the things that have been said that, you know, kind of are important to me, this is how out of character this development will be for the community there, that, you know, that's been addressed, and we've talked about the potential damage to the groundwater supply that we're all dependent on. But I just want to throw out some numbers that I found on Dixon Water Authority, Dixon County's website. It kind of makes that sink home. They list several of the wastewater treatment facilities that, I guess it's the bigger ones are the ones they're more proud of, I'm not sure which. But they're listed on their website, telling you the capacity that they have and that they're processing there. They go from 15,000 gallons per day up to 4 million at the various facilities that they support. Fairview has the privilege of having a couple of facilities listed there. One is the old Fairview wastewater treatment plant, which is capable of handling about 460,000 gallons per day, according to their numbers. Cumberland Estates, I didn't realize, was already big enough to be listed on their site. Processes, has a capacity at least for 81,000 gallons per day. That's for a development that has about 270 homes. So we're basically doubling that. So we're looking at, I assume a capacity to double that is going to put you up to 150,000, 160,000 gallons per day to be, could be possibly processed there, pumped back into the ground, potentially into, well, it's going in the ground, so it's going into our groundwater supply, right? That is roughly a third of what the Fairview wastewater treatment plant can handle. So you're talking about a third of what the old wastewater treatment plant can handle. You're putting out in to the ground within a couple hundred feet of the city limits. So if you go back to the original approval on this plan, it was when Water Authority of Dixon was just taking over the wastewater processing here in Fairview. And I think the approval at that point was probably made under the assumption that Dixon was going to provide sewer capacity that Fairview had not been able to come up with in order to be able to do more development. Well, that hasn't come to pass, right? I mean, you're still dealing with sewer capacity at this point. So that puts us to these onsite sewage processing that we're considering here. It may be inevitable that we have to have some of that, but do we, is it responsible to put it out at the edge of the city limits in homes, as we described, that are surrounding homes, relying on well water? Yeah, I don't think it's the responsible way to go. If we're going to have to have those types of developments, let's bring them inside the city where we have neighboring developments that already have municipal water supply to rely on. Please don't bring those out to the areas where we have no other choice for where to get our water other than the groundwater. I could say more, but I think we've covered a lot of it already, so I won't add much to it on that. I just heard you devote this down tonight, that it's out of character with the community where it is, and it doesn't fit in with a good, solid plan for where Fairview wants to go. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Colleen Van Fossen. I live at 7801 Pine Crest Court. And I wanted to just bring it back to memory. Do you remember when they were creating the 2040 Plan? And we all went down to Camp Marymont, and we went through that big room with the Post-it notes, and we wrote down what it is that we would like to see in the 2040 Plan? And I think the city hired a consultant to put that together. And we talked about what we wanted, what we would like to see, what we would dream about. I remember a lot of people were asking for a bigger and better library. But one common theme that I saw amongst all of the requests that were coming in from the entire community, it was the process that allowed the entire community to say what they want to see in their community, was smart growth. We know this community is going to grow. But we want to see growth that is good for the community, good for the environment, good for the people who already live here, whether you just arrived from another state, or whether you've grown up here your entire life. We want to see responsible development that is good for all parties concerned. And as I've been listening to everyone speak about the step systems, you know, I drive past one every day. You know, they put a subdivision on Cox Pike, and I drive past the, I call it the toilet, every day. It's a big gravel pit. They put it right by the road. There's no screening. Guess that's what they can do. But 20, 25 years from now, who's going to be responsible for maintaining those step systems? Who does it? If, what if, you know, plumbing doesn't work, it doesn't work. And it's unpleasant when it doesn't work. All that maintenance of those pipes leading to that step system from all of those homes, they've got to be connected. Who's going to take care of those step systems if they're not executed properly? Or something goes wrong? Or, well, the technology just wasn't what we thought it was? You know, or they kind of went on the cheap. We didn't know it at the time, but they kind of went on the cheap. Those are the kinds of things that you hear when things go wrong. And, you know, when people can't flush the toilet, it doesn't take long for things to go wrong. So I would be concerned about those step systems in the far-off future. Whose responsibility is it? And I would say that because it's a public health and safety issue, that folks would come knocking at the city's door. So think about those long-term propositions. Are those step systems going to work infinitely? So those are the things that I wanted to say, and I won't belabor everybody, the things, the good points that everybody else has made. But thank you for this opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tammy Hyler. I live at 70, whoa, I'm loud! 7114 Elrod Road. I am, I built my dream log home with the wraparound porch, with my dream horse barn, with my dream round pen, and my dream black-and-white paints, along with my husband, who came along a little later, in 1999. I'm one of those scary people from LA who came here and never, ever, ever want to leave. This is my home. My property, our property, if you look at the whole piece, we are in the very tip of the horseshoe. Very, very middle of this, adjacent. This water, we're in the lower part. We're going to get flooded. I sent this board, how many articles, how many TikToks, how many YouTube videos? I emailed each of you. How DR Horton, their construction, they're known for flooding people and neighborhoods around their construction. They have hundreds of lawsuits against them, current ones. There's actually a website that says, that has developed just about complaints about DR Horton's construction. I couldn't sit down and not say something. Jeff has got it covered legally. Our counsel, obviously, is a different opinion of the law than your city attorney. And I want you to remember that, because it's opinions of the law. Don't feel forced to, by your own counsel, to vote this through, or else. Because this is our lives that we're talking about here. Our homes, our land, our water. And we want to be here forever. And Walton, if you're in the room, why did you never let us know that this was for sale? This land, this land needs to stay. I mean, does anybody watch Yellowstone in this audience? Okay, me too. I love Yellowstone. I didn't know that I was going to have to live it someday. I am living Yellowstone right now. And this is the age-old story. Big bad developer wants to put too many homes at our fence line, dah, 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 dah. But right now, you all have the choice to vote this down and do the right thing for responsible growth in this community. And we will never, ever, ever forget that. And please come talk to me if something changes in this land's for sale.
Good evening. My wife, Diana, was up here just a few minutes ago. And since then, there's been quite a few people speaking. And I have a real issue with memory. I had a stroke some time ago, and so just remembering, and when I'm trying to think of some specific things, it doesn't come out exactly the way it should. So if I say something that's really bad, just understand that I don't mean, I don't mean it really. But when I heard the people before me were talking about living in Mission Viejo, and Diana and I lived in Mission Viejo, and one of the things that came to mind was the fact that there were two instances where the city of Mission Viejo and El Toro Marine Base, the golf course, tried to reuse affluent, which is wastewater that came out of the sewer, had been supposedly cleaned up and made safe. And basically, when the city used the affluent to water all the flowers and stuff in the areas that were just meant to be beautiful space, it caused the bacteria and other stuff, I don't know exactly what it was, but it killed all of the flowers, and it killed all the grass because of the bacteria that was laid out when everybody that had a decision to make about the affluent and using it felt like it was going to be safe. Everybody in the city of Mission Viejo said, "Don't worry, because it's safe." And it ended up killing all of the flowers and the grass and that sort of thing in a really beautiful part of the world. And then the golf course, when they sprayed the affluent, used the affluent as water, to water the golf course, the golf course died and didn't come back for four or five years. So where it... or five years, so where it could be used again. So those are just two things that I remember happening, uh, at Mission Viejo in California. Uh, and when we talked about Mission Viejo, it came back to mind. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, my name's Samantha Hamby. I live at 7126 Anderson Road. I have been a member of Fairview. We moved here in 2012, and we bought our first home in a subdivision. And it wasn't what I wanted, but hey, it's like our first home, right? And so I worked really hard. I saved and saved, and we just bought our dream home about two years ago. And I'm just, I'm really sad of the possibility of 500 plus homes and, and ruining like the peace that finally have and the amount of work and just bliss I feel every day. Feel like we've already voted this down. Mr. Butler, in December of 2021, you talked about the quality of life of Fairview, this, this not being what we want. So I'm asking that we vote it down again.
My name is Hurley Lampley. I live at 7250 Northwest Highway, straight across the road from the Elrod Farm. They've been surveyors for the past, this is the second week that they have surveyed Northwest Highway. I don't know why it's taking them so long. Yesterday, they was out in my hayfield. And I talked to one of the surveyors and I said, what, what, how much property are they going to take to build this road? He said, well, they can come 90, no, it was 100 feet, 90 or 100 feet from the center of Northwest Highway if they want to. The way I feel, the people that's going to make the millions off of the property that they've invested in to build houses on, they need to furnish whatever property it takes to make another lane on Northwest Highway. So say they got to have it to support the people that say going to build houses for. So why shouldn't they furnish the land to build the extra lane? Which I don't think they need three. They can't keep up the two that they got. Just drive down and see what I'm saying.
My name is George Lampley. Can you hear that?
Yes, sir.
Uh, and, and I'm concerned with the runoff. I own the farm. I guess it's on the south, uh, south side of the project. And it runs from, uh, Das Lampley Road all the way over to the Anderson Road. My farm is split by ravine right down the middle. Been that way ever since God made it, and I don't have any problem with that. Except I can't get from one side of my farm to the other side of the farm if my covert is washed out. It's just too steep. My attorney has been in contact with the project's attorney, and we've looked at the hydraulic engineer's report, which says there will be less water runoff after the project than there was before the project. Hard to believe. I guess it's based on the holding ponds that they've put in. But holding ponds fill up, holding ponds run, run over in the case of big rains. And my attorney has asked that the, that the covert be repaired if it is washed out at the builder's expense. The attorney's reply to that, builder's attorney reply was, well, the cover's too small. But if it's going to be less water, then it shouldn't be a problem because the cover's been in there for 40 years and, uh, we've had minor problems, but we take care of them. And so that's my concern is the water going out of the project across my farm and washing my covert out. Thank you.
I'm Felicia Nichols. I live at 7169 New Hope Road. I've been a resident here for 22 years. I'm originally from Northern California and Hawaii. One of the things that I've heard is everybody talking about the safety of the water, the groundwater. Nobody's mentioned that human waste contains E. coli and things like that. That's drug resistant. So think for a moment, the groundwater gets poisoned with human waste. That waste turns out to be drug resistant E. coli or drug resistant Klebschel pneumonia. You can't cure that. There's only one or two drugs currently available that treat those particular infections. I welcome suggestion that the board members Google Klebschel pneumonia and drug resistant E. coli because it can't be treated. And what happens to the people then? Not only do they not have water that's safe to drink, but they die. And I would like you to consider that because these ponds, these storage areas that they're going to facilitate, they're going to fail at some point. And they're going to release affluent that's dangerous. And I just want you all to think about that because I haven't heard anybody mention any of that. And you can all Google drug resistant infection. Thank you for your time.
Okay, at this time, we will hear from the developers and builders, please.
Good evening, Mayor, excuse me, good evening, Mayor Commissioners. My name is Matt Doudal. We're DR Horton. Um, as you know, we're a home builder, land developer. Our Nashville Division office is in Williamson County in Nolansville, if you didn't know that. Um, we're here this evening to talk about the revisions that we've made to the previously approved plan from 2008. Uh, we're here to walk you through those different revisions. Kind of general overview is the, um, the previous plan, as mentioned a couple of times this evening, was 725 lots. We're reducing that number down to 513 lots, as was current, uh, reduction of 212 lots from what was previously approved. Uh, it's about a 30% reduction from what was previously approved by the city back in 2008. Our consultant with Reagan Smith, Jay Easter, is here to go in detail with those plans, and he has a presentation for that. And after he goes through the, kind of the details of the plan, uh, we'll come back and walk you through some of the homes that, uh, we're planning to build in the community as well. So I'll introduce Jay right now. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Commission. Um, again, I'm here, Jay Easter from Reagan Smith, and we've got the full development team, uh, to discuss the plans and address any of your questions you may have tonight. I'm waiting to see if the presentation comes, comes up on the screen. There we go. See if I have control of it now.
You said point it back there, I believe.
Well, okay. May take a little while to get the slides to change. This is the approved recorded 2008 plan. Um, this was the plan we re-presented at the planning commission meeting when we discussed whether or not this was a reinstatement or a modification, major modification to the plan. The, then was determined that this would be a major modification to the plan development because the points of, I'm going to point behind y'all, I'm sorry. But, uh, for several reasons, points of access changed, which was a requirement that made it turn into a major modification. Some of the land had been already dedicated to the city from the previous approval. The parkland up here, the property here on 96 had been dedicated, and some of the lot sizes had changed within the, the project. So that required it to be viewed as a major modification. All right, the original 16s of conditions of approval are still part of our proposal and have not changed and are included in the modified PUD that is before you tonight. This is, this is not working well.
Do you mind going back to that real quickly?
Yes, ma'am. The conditions?
Yes.
Okay. There we go.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, we can handle that. up the original plan showing the changes in the minimum lot sizes and the lot counts per phases and just tried to represent everything that was on the recorded document that was being modified with the submittal. And the same with the plan data. We, we, we struck through and showed where the density reduction happened, where the total lot count changed, where the open space increased. Okay, but a quick summary of, from between the approved 2008 plan and the proposed 2023 plan, the original plan had 725 lots. There was a 212 lot reduction for a total of 513 homes. Uh, that included reducing the townhome count by 48 from 175 to 127 townhomes, reducing the single family lots by 164 lots. Originally, there were 550 lots, and now there are 386 proposed lots. It was a density drop from 2.76 units per acre to 2.04 dwellings per acre. The open space increased. The original plan had 46.12 acres. Uh, the proposed plan has 91.47 acres, not including the drip field area. Uh, the minimum lot size did increase to 7,200. The minimum lot width increased to 60, and there was a reduction in the total overall public roadway, um, roadways within the development by 772 linear feet for a total of 22,015 linear feet of new public roads that would be constructed within the neighborhood. And this is a massing comparison between the, the 2008 plan and the 2023 plan, just by the sheer mass of green. You can see the difference in, uh, the amount of green space, uh, that is in the new plan versus the old plan. This is an enlargement of the development, showing the amount of green space. Uh, the drip field is located right here in the bottom corner. Um, the open space is meandered throughout the development. The, the amenity area is located here in the center, and there is a trail system that meanders through the entire project, as well as other open spaces that will be programmed as we develop, uh, within the neighborhood that will be improved, uh, amenity areas This exhibit shows the distribution of lot sizes throughout the development. Uh, we have a range of lot sizes from 7,200 to just under 8,000 square feet. They're illustrated in a light beige color. It's kind of hard to see on the screen. Um, there are 107 of those. Uh, we have lots that range from 8,000 to just under 10,000 square feet. There are 138 of those distributed throughout the development. Um, but every area of the development has a variety of lot sizes in it, so each phase should have a variety of prod, product in it as it's developed. And the townhomes are still located in this bottom corner adjacent to the drip field that would be located there. The original 16 conditions of approval are still part of the project and have not been modified, and they are listed within the submittal documents. All right, keep going. Uh, the phasing plan, um, broke out. Uh, we're Phase 1, we would be starting here, along with starting the construction of the drip field for Phase 1. Phase 1 does include the amenity area, and, uh, we provided a breakout of the phases, the areas of the phases, the density of, and amount of open space within each phase. The critical lot exhibit that has been discussed, this was worked through with staff, um, and it was provided. The, the critical lots are, have an asterisk on them, and those are lots that are containing, uh, existing slopes, uh, pre-development that are between 15 and 20%. Each one of those lots is required to have an engineered site plan to pull the building permit after we go through the, um, site plan and construction document phase. And each one of those lots will be noted on that plan, and when a building permit is requested, they'll have to provide an engineered site plan. We worked through all of this with staff prior to submitting the documents. Again, in quick summary, we have reduced, we have reduced the overall, overall lot count by 212 homes. We have reduced townhomes and single family. We've reduced density. We've increased open space. We've increased minimum lot size. We've increased minimum lot width. We've reduced the overall road count. It is in compliance with the land use plan and the minimum residential, new residential medium neighborhood. Under that land use designation, a small lot option allowing up to four dwelling units per gross density area is allowed within, um, that designation of the land use plan, and we have an existing zoning, um, in place already. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Matt so they can discuss the architecture, and we have the whole team here to answer and address any questions that the commission may have. All right, you have to hit that button and point it backwards. Yep.
We just thought we'd walk you through some of the different home types, different varieties of homes and different materials that we're going to be proposing within the development. Um, one of the criteria in the original 16 conditions was for senior housing within the community. Uh, it had to be a minimum of 1,500 square feet. Um, so within our plan, we actually have multiple single story, uh, floor plans, some smaller, some even larger. Um, and we'll go through a few of those, uh, this evening. Uh, but what I wanted to show you was on this example, um, this would be an example of one of those homes that doesn't meet the 2,000 square foot requirement, but is over the 1,500 square feet. This particular home is about 1,774 square feet. Um, it shows different types of elevations, different materials, uh, brick, hardy board, stone, it, it, it's a variety. It's a variety. We'll show you in just a little bit, but we use a big color palette, materials that provide variety throughout the community. And so each home type, while each home may have the exact same floor plan, the front of the elevation is going to look different. So then you combine that with multiple different bricks and stones and colors, and it will provide variety throughout the community. This is just, as I said, an example of one of the senior housing homes. Another example, the senior housing home, just a little bit actually smaller than the previous one, but this can provide some of that senior housing that I know that has been mentioned before, I believe, maybe the Planning Commission meeting where someone was interested in making sure that that was still part of our plan to meet the needs of the community. This is just one of the examples of five different homes that would fit on the 60-foot lots. This particular home is about 2,600 square feet. We have homes ranging from 2,200 up to 2,700 square feet that would fit on these 60-foot lots, in addition to some of those senior housing homes. 70-foot lot and the 80-foot lot. So this is, this is the same home. It just shows differing materials. The colors are the same, but we have different color schemes, different stones, bricks. But this just gives you an example of how you can have a home that's majority hardier cementitious siding, which is the lap siding you see kind of in the middle of the home. The top is a shake shingle that's actually a cementitious material as well. And then, you know, it can be mixed with different bricks and stone as well. Just another example of different colors, varieties of a home that would fit on this size lot. This particular home is about 2799 square feet. Yet another example, this home also brick, hardy, lots of variety that we can provide. This particular home, it's a stone brick model, it's about 3,300 square feet. And then on the 80-foot lots exclusively, these homes would not fit on the 70-foot lots. These are all single-story, has the appearance of two-story, but they are all single-story product that could be categorized for if a retiree was wanting more space. These homes, these next three that I'll show you, range anywhere from 2,600 up to 3,200 square feet. They're fairly similar in size, but again, different colors, different materials can be added to these. And then each, each home type has multiple elevations of each. To work, in the townhomes, same thing, multiple colors, multiple materials can be moved in and out so that every block of townhome buildings does not look the same. This is just a representative of one of them. And then here's all the different bricks, stones, color palettes that we use typically within our communities. Nikki, our marketing manager, discuss some of the materials a little bit.
Hello, I'm Nikki Paulson. I'm with the marketing department of D.R. Horton Nashville. Just wanted to touch real quick on the color schemes. With the elevation shown with each floor plan, it will come out to about 35 elevations in here with all of these different color schemes. The color schemes you see, there's two bricks that go with every scheme, so you can double that. There's two stones with every scheme, so you can double that. We do try and keep a muted color palette, but not too muted where it all blends in together. We do have colors that stand out, stones that stand out, bricks that stand out, et cetera. It does provide a lot of variety. And then we do follow a rule of three when we're building out the houses, so you will not have the same elevation or color scheme across the street from you, directly across the street, diagonal to you, and not on either side of you. So we don't want it to be repetitive or redundant here.
We just want to say thank you for allowing us to speak, and we're here to answer any questions you may have. We're really excited that this could be a great community for Fairview, provide a lot of housing that's needed in the community, and we're here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you. Sean's going to say a few words.
Mayor Anderson, members of the commission, Sean Henry representing D.R. Horton, 511th Avenue North in Nashville. What, some of this feels like Groundhog Day. I don't know if it feels that way for those of you who've been on the Planning Commission, but the, you know, the critical point that I think is being lost on people who are challenging what's, what's on your agenda tonight is the fact that for the past 15 years, the property has been zoned for the RM8 PUD and the, and the plan associated with that. And I don't know how to operate your machinery here, but if, if you take a look at page five of what was handed out to you, this is the page that is the open space comparison between 2008 and 2023. And I understand when people move to an area, they, they may not come to City Hall and may not review the zoning map or may not meet with staff and ask, what's the zoning on the property around me or near me? What are the development rights of the people next door to me? I understand that. That happens all the time. I have, I represent clients who encounter that situation all the time, and I think that's, that's a large part of what, and what I'm hearing has occurred in the past here. And what I've heard here also is that people want less development. They want less development on this property. The application in front of you is for less development. The project on the right, which is the agenda item, is less development than the project on the left. And the project on the left from 2008 is the present plan of development. So if nothing's approved here tonight, we're left with the plan on the, on the left, and that's what folks would face through the submission of additional development plans pursuant to the 2008 approval. So this is not a rezoning of agricultural land to, to this new plan. What's being, what's being requested is a change for the better, and the Planning Commission determined that, that that exactly was the case. The recommendation from the Planning Commission was that the new plan here in 2023 is consistent with your general plan that was recently adopted. And I know there's some questions about that, but the density is exactly what your general plan, comprehensive plan calls for. So, you know, is, is 200 fewer homes more desirable than what's, what it's presently approved for? These are the questions that you, as elected officials, need to ask yourselves and answer tonight. Is 200 fewer homes on this property less development as people are asking you for? Is twice as much open space better than, than not as much open space? And that, that depiction on the screen there, the green color doesn't show up very well on the right side, but, but that's what that depicts. It also involves, this new proposal, this, this change involves about a mile and a half less of roadway. And so that's, that's what's in front of you. You know, does the community want a better plan of development that is less development than what it's presently approved for? It's that simple. And we would submit that, that what the Planning Commission has recommended is what this body should approve. Otherwise, the folks are going to wonder, you know, why are we still talking about a 2008 plan, which is what we'll be talking about if this application tonight, you know, is denied? And I realize we've got another vote. This is just the first reading. So we ask you to vote in favor of this on first reading.
This is the second.
Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. We're asking for you to vote in favor of this tonight and allow this project to move on. And my clients looking forward to working with, with this board and developing the development agreement regarding Northwest Highway and getting that project approved and getting Phase 1 underway. So we're happy to answer any questions. We very much appreciate your courtesy here tonight and your patience with us. Thank you.
Anyone else from your group? Okay, so now we will turn it over to the board, and we will close the public hearing. Item 9, Old Business. Item 2, 92, is second and final reading of ordinance 2023-03, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Fairview by approving the major modification amendment of the Bellhaven planned unit development with 513 residential units on 251.16 acres of property consisting of map 021 parcel 21.01, applicant D.R. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we deny the application.
I would like to also bring something forward that probably some of y'all do not know yet. The Water Authority of Dixon, their request for the Lick Creek project was turned down by TDEC. I'd like to see what the future might bring. I'd like to see, since this was originally proposed by the Water Authority of Dixon, that they would furnish 725 conventional sewer lots. I would like to see what their future brings for the city of Fairview. They've altered out 20 lots at a time through the years, and I realize there was a lot of lapse in time. But the word the other night at Hickman County High School was that they were going to look into transporting the sewer to the Cumberland River, which would eliminate Lick Creek, Duck River, the Pioneer River, all the tributaries, including one of them would be here in Fairview, which would have been Turnbull Creek. So I'd like to see what the future brings with, with that aspect of the sewer and get it back to a conventional type sewer rather than the onsite sand filter systems. And that's the reason. That's the reason that I second Leslie's motion.
Mayor, just as a note or a comment to Mr. Hall, in discussions with Water Authority, maybe a year or so ago, I asked the question, if we had endless amounts of public sewer, would you still require onsite step systems for large developments? And their answer was yes. So I think that going forward, they see the step system as their answer, and I don't know that there'll ever be a spot, and Ms. Rogers was here at the last meeting, but he's not here tonight, but I don't know if they'll ever provide a large sewer capacity. The step system is their answer. And I asked them the lifespan on them. He said perpetuity if maintained. And when those are built, they're, they are owned and controlled by Water Authority of Dixon County forever for the lifespan of it, just for reference of it.
Any other comments from the board?
Mayor, I just will say, Ms. Hamley referenced it in 2021 when this first came back to the Planning Commission. As the Chair of the Planning Commission, I referenced that I did not feel confident that it fit, that met the 2040 plan. Mr. Pape called me a couple of days ago. He said, what's your, what is your opinion or feels for future of Fairview? And my comment to him was, I feel like I don't, I can't have an opinion with the situation that's been given to us, where it's been told of, if, if it was denied, we would be sued or we have, or the underlying zoning is in place. And so there's been a lot of emotions trying to figure out what is right, what is, what's best to represent Fairview. If it goes this way, are you sued? If it goes this way, are you sued? So just, I'm still, I'd like, I have three pages of questions that I made from notes from the, from the public comment. I'd love to try and hit on some of those or get a better feel for it if we have time. I don't know which part.
Absolutely. This is too important for us not to hear the questions you have. So go right ahead.
I guess one of the first ones that would start would be the reference to 10-203.32L, the list of exceptions or deviations from an ordinance. So is there a list of variations or deviations from the current ordinance as it's submitted? So usually, when planning commission, when it goes to the planning commission, the ordinance would have a list of variances requested at the bottom or at the end. This ordinance doesn't have any reference to that. Are there active ordinances, or is that something that we would, we would see when type plans and middle came through?
The only statement in this plan that references a variance, and I was unaware of it until I reread the note that staff provided us, had to do with the minimum lot size for a critical lot. And I would have to ask staff what exactly, we worked through that with them, the wording to put it onto the plans. But other than that, there are no variances from the approved PUD or the documents that we were instructed to follow that I'm aware of that we're requesting.
How about the reference to the improved open space requirements?
There will be more than enough improved open space to quantify, to satisfy the 10 acres of open space that I would think was referenced during the public comment.
Improved or, or just general green open space? And so usually the plat will call out improved open space.
The general green open space exceeds the requirement. I believe the comment that Mr. Pape made.
Improved is the question I'm giving to you.
Improved, yes. We will have more than 10 acres worth of improved open space within this neighborhood.
So traditionally, when we see a plat, we would see a list of improved open space acreage. And I don't think that it's on this. It lists some square foot for the building sizes. It lists the walking trail. Trying to find it on my.
Yeah, we have not quantified every inch of individual open space within the neighborhood other than a gross area. I can, I mean, as each plat comes in or each construction document or development plans come in, we will more than happily quantify each one of those.
But tonight, there's an overlay in place that in 20 years, if you don't build it now, you'll come back to me and say, you approved this overlay, it didn't have enough green space. That's what, that's what we would need to quantify it and know that this is, this is the green space in place that meets the requirements. And so if it's not on this plat, how do we know that it meets?
The green space is on the plat.
The improved, the improved.
Can I, could I interject? I apologize.
Yes, ma'am.
So if you're reading the article, a minimum of 10% of the total area of the PUD, excluding areas devoted to public right-of-way, non-residential uses, FEMA flood zones, and areas devoted to wastewater disposal, that's a step system. So that's basically everything that's not a residential lot, 10% of that, and then 50% of.
Of that has to be improved.
Of that, and they do meet that.
So five acres of required?
Five acres required.
And so it doesn't list the improved open space on here. It lists the open space amenity area, 1.61 pool, 300 square foot, cabana, 3,500, playground area, 2,500, and walking trails, the plus minus two miles. So I guess the walking trails are probably what are bringing them up closer to that.
Okay. We can quantify it as a condition of approval and provide it before the plan is, because we have to make a resumme to staff addressing all the comments before the plan is recorded and becomes the official document. and becomes the official document.
Ms. Toddie, could you address the 58 lots that are critical?
Yes, so I believe that was a note that previous staff had asked them to place on their, that's a critical lot. You have to have a submittal, basically when you go to final plat, you have to have an asterisk on it, and we get that as a separate grading plan. What this is talking about is called the hillside overlay standard within our zoning ordinance. And it says if your lot is between, has 15 to 20% on the lot, you have to have a three-acre minimum. That is something that's been granted in the past as a variance. As a PUD, that would be a deviation to standards of the zoning ordinance.
So would this be a variance that you're asking for with the 58 lots that are critical?
If Ms. Toddie says I'm asking for a variance, then yes.
So there is more than just the one variance being asked for, correct?
That's, that's the only variance that I think I would be asking for. We just quantify that we meet the open space requirement.
Are the 58 units, are they all together or are they in different places?
No, ma'am, they're dispersed throughout the neighborhood.
So would each, Ms. Toddie, would each lot be considered a variance, considering they should all have, excuse me, different issues?
We have not done that in the past when we've done variances. We've done it with the plan set. It's how we've done it in the past.
But whether you come before us and you ask for one variance or 58, you're still asking for a change. Is that correct?
We're asking, we were asked to denote the lots on the plan that had existing slopes of 15 to 20% on them and to provide an engineered site plan after development for those, site development for those lots before they pulled a building permit.
All right. That questioning was kind of leading, so the follow-up question's going to be, since you are asking us to make changes, can we not ask you to make changes? We as this board is what I mean.
Yes.
How much do you have in this project dedicated to road improvements?
I'm going to have to ask the developer, are you meaning the Northwest Highway road improvements?
Any, any current city street that needs to be improved, what is your dollar figure? And are you willing to write the check tonight to the city?
I don't know the dollar figure for that.
We have an approximate dollar figure, and I can't write a check this evening. We have to have, you know, all of our approvals in place and all different things. And I don't have that exact number, but it's in the three to, I think, $4 million range that we have in our budget. We met with previous staff, previous city manager, Collins.
And if it wasn't part of this, Mr. Pape's comments were that y'all just might decide we can't do that in the future.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
It was mentioned that there is a possibility, if it's not recorded, that y'all could say, well, we don't have the funds to do that anymore. We can't do that. So the city would be stuck with it.
Well, there has to be a development agreement.
One of the conditions is the preparation of a development agreement for these improvements that the city will have to enter into. The city will have to either approve or disprove the development agreement. So if the improvements aren't what the city likes or in the amount that the city believes they should be, then the city's going to, the city will have a say in that with regards to the development agreement that will have to be separately approved.
Okay. Would, do you not think that that is kind of out of order?
No, it's normal.
I know it's, I'm not saying it's not normal. And I'm not saying that's not how cities do it across the country. But why in the world would we change the zoning on the property for the next person if D.R. Horton, Horton walks?
So they're not changing the zoning. The zoning was put in place in 2008.
Sorry, the site plan.
It was approved in 2016, and now we're here again in 2023. They're talking about an amendment to the PUD.
So are you in agreement that we could say tonight, we don't agree with the 500 and some odd houses, we want to do 450 and?
No, because it's not before you. So you can either approve it or not approve it. But the standard review is administrative, which means that it cannot be arbitrary, capricious, or illogical. So you can't substitute your own desires. I don't like this density, it should be less or it should be more.
Correct.
That would be, that would be capricious. What you have to do is look at what they've proposed, and if it's substantially similar to the plan that was approved in 2016 and the plan that was approved in 2008, and it otherwise meets the city's standards, I would submit to you, then you have to consider approving it. Because if you don't, and you substitute your own wants or desires or thinking it should look this way or look that way, then you're being arbitrary and capricious.
So with the original plan having an ingress egress on 96 and it not having that now, I have the right to vote against it because that's the major change.
So the city has requested, as I understand it, the city's requested the ingress and egress. So that request came from the city, and so them coming back with it.
So who has, who has the authority, the final authority to say where the ingress and egress is? This board or some former employee?
The Board of Commissioners has that authority.
So I want to make a statement, the fact that on the ordinance that is either going to be approved or denied tonight, at the bottom, it states, "The developers' portion of the City of Fairview Capital Improvement, Improvements Plan to expand Northwest Highway to a three-lane collector shall be agreed upon by the City of Fairview and developer and approved by the Board of Commissioners as a development agreement prior to Phase One, fully funded by the city prior to Phase One Final Submission Plat." Does that tell me that they're not going to give anything towards the improvements to Northwest Highway?
No, I don't believe that's what it says. And I would ask Mr. Henry to respond to that question because that's the developer's obligation. What it's saying, though, is that the development agreement has to be approved before they get permit one, but I'll defer to Mr. Henry.
So I sense that there's some concern that the developer's going to weasel out of some public obligation or public requirement, and I don't understand that because in the development process, you start with zoning. We have a preliminary plan here. The next step is for Phase One, and Phase One is up there along Northwest Highway where two roads are coming in. So the next thing the Planning Commission is going to see is the submission of a final, final phase site plan, detailed construction drawings. We're going to do a development agreement with the city that'll come before this board once we know the costs, the full costs associated based on construction design, which is, my understanding, has not been designed yet. So once that design is nailed down, you've got bids, we know how much it costs, the developer and the city's sharing that expense, it's a private-public partnership on Northwest Highway. But of course, no lots can be built without a road, and the roads have to come first. And the plat is the process by which the roads are either bonded and the plat recorded, or the developer could go ahead and spend the money on building the Phase One roads itself. So it will require cooperation with the city, Northwest Highway. Northwest Highway requires a collaboration, and you'll ultimately decide on that development agreement. If you want the developer to contribute toward that expense, that's what this developer has agreed to do.
So if, if it was passed tonight, then we don't have anything in writing yet. We don't know that they're going to approve our deposit, I mean, the development agreement.
This, this plan is dependent upon, as a condition of approval in this ordinance, a development agreement being approved by you all. In the event that you all don't approve a development agreement, the project doesn't move forward. Yes?
Is that, Mr. Butler, is that correct from past history?
This is a new one. And so, but that's the way I read it, is you would not be able to start construction until a development agreement is reached and be able, and we agree, we vote and agree on that number that you're putting towards the road improvements. And so is it correct that the city is going to build the road and they are going to pay into, to that? Is that correct, Ms. Toddie?
Yes, that's the understanding. And development agreements, y'all approve them every meeting. They happen before anyone breaks ground. That's, this is standard process. That sets the bond amount, that sets anything they're going to put towards escrow improvements, anything like that. You all set that cost, and you all agree to that, and that has to come before you, the board.
Are we made aware of when the development agreement is, is being approved? Will it come to the board or will it be done with staff?
It appear on the board. I'll participate in drafting that. It will appear to the board, it will be on the agenda, and the board will have to approve it, just like we do on every other development agreement. Our code actually requires development agreement on all projects, commercial projects, residential projects. And that's what you've done here in the past, and it's what will happen in the future as long as we have this particular zoning code.
Ms. Toddie, I have a follow-up to what Mr. Butler just said. In speaking of Hurley-Lampley's property and the other property owners up and down through there, is the city now going to be the bad guy and go take people's front yards? Is that what you're telling me?
The development contract agreement hasn't been fully worked out yet, but the intent is that we are going to acquire right-of-way for the necessary road improvements like we would do on any other road.
And how many years do we see that taking to accomplish?
I can't say for sure.
What would be your best guess, Mr. Attorney, with people that don't want to sell? We know, we know 840 took over a decade.
The condemnation of eminent domain process, once it becomes legal, it's about 45 days. You tender the money, it's granted for the public improvement. Now, now if there's continuing litigation after that, it could take some time, months, a year, two years, but that doesn't mean that the road project is not occurring because the property, once the money is tendered, the property's indebted to the city for the public improvement.
But you have to have three votes on this board to condemn the property, correct?
Yes.
Okay. That may happen. I don't, I don't, it's not going to have my vote, not, I'm just not going to do that. I think it should be the developer's responsibility. If the project is deemed that the road needs to be improved, the developer needs to do it.
Well, I don't think we know, or I don't know, is how much right-of-way there already is. And so depending on how wide this road and the existing right-of-way, they may or may not need to condemn. And it may not be consistent along the entire part of the road. It may be in some places and not others. I don't know the answer to that question.
Mayor, sorry.
Sorry. When we had the discussion about the, with the engineer widening 96 and all that, if I'm not mistaken, there was a discussion about having three 12-foot wide lanes and then five-foot walkways on each side of the road. So you have to look at to that, look into that and consider how much property you really are taking from the people who don't even want this.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
This, this project is not the genesis of the overall Northwest Highway road widening project.
No, but it's, it's going to have the most major impact as of right now.
Okay. And we are dedicating along our frontage all of the right-of-way needed for the expansion so that they should not have to take property from the other side of the road. And we're contributing towards the cost of the overall, of the project to be built beyond what the traffic study says our road improvements would be.
You just said should, and who is they?
Excuse me, sir?
You just said should, they should not need extra, and who is they? You spoke of they.
Okay, well, there's another group designing the roadway. The property is being surveyed now, is what I understand. The final alignment for the roadway project has not been set. So it is the intent that when the center line alignment comes, it reaches our property, the full roadway width would be developed along this property's frontage, and we have set aside roadway dedication for that. But until final, final construction documents are done and the design gets further along, nobody knows exactly where the road's going.
So in my opinion, I think that there's no reason for us to approve this application because we don't have any definite answers. Everything has to wait for the, the development agreement, but we're approving something and then hoping the developer agreement goes through the way we need it to for the citizens, not for y'all, not for us, for the people of Fairview who are impacted by all of this.
If I may, full disclosure, we were approached last year by former staff, city manager and former engineering staff regarding our plan, and they requested that we remove the connection to 96 and that they had plans for roadway improvement for Northwest Highway. And they, we worked out a verbal agreement, nothing was obviously written, that we would eliminate that connection, we would then have two connections on Northwest Highway, and we would contribute to the rebuilding of that road. So that's where all this began with the roadway improvement.
How many of those people are you still dealing with?
None of them. So we're dealing with you all now.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. Ms. Toddie was, was on staff at the time, but other than that, I believe that is it.
Ms. Toddie, do you think that we don't need an ingress egress point out on the Highway 96 with a subdivision this large? Why would you not want to go out on this?
Once again, I'm not, I'm not going to, that was not me who made that decision. That was made between the developer and previous staff. I can't speak to that.
I'm not asking you about the past.
I don't think Ms. Toddie was involved in any of this.
That's not my question.
At the time, I was the assistant city engineer. I wasn't making decisions. This is.
My question is now, you are the city engineer. If this is your project from now on, do you think a subdivision of that magnitude should empty out onto a state highway or a small country road? I want your professional opinion.
If, if the country road is improved to a three-lane collector, which was the plan moving forward, then that would be a good solution. And if not, then 96 would be a good solution because it is a state route. I think both could.
And part of that, I realize.
On a country road, no, but a three-lane collector, yes.
Okay. And I understand previous staff, but the genesis of this was that the city had plans to improve Northwest Highway to provide a signal at Northwest Highway and Highway 96, and they felt it would be better if we were contributing to that project, putting our traffic onto a new road with a signalized intersection, which with future development going on right now and then possibly in the future in this corridor than us connecting to 96, they just felt that was the better option. So that's why we made the change.
Did you agree with that?
We were okay with it, absolutely.
Then the original plan, having ingress egress on 96, why was that done that way if you think it would be best doing it some other way?
I'm not sure I wasn't involved in, back in 2008, why that original egress was there. I'm not sure.
Mayor, if I could ask a quick question. So, Ms. Toddie, Mr. Carter, maybe you can help me with this. So what I'm trying to grasp right now, and I know the intent was well and good, the plan is to do Northwest all in one project from 96 toward, to the end, and so those pieces are going to go in correlation together. We've, we've had some prior submittals where we even put time constraints on. Phase One couldn't be recorded until the off-site improvements for the, for the traffic impacts were done, but it had to be done in, in, together in unison with, with the Phase One developments. You wouldn't be able to build houses until those off-site improvements were made. And so now, just from a timing standpoint, I guess when the development agreement hits, that in theory, the plan would be to have engineering completed and ready to start road construction immediately. But what scares me is if, if the city is taking on the brunt of it, if there's, if we lose any time trying to get right-of-way acquisition or things like that, we, and costs go up, or if it's over budget, the city is going to bear the brunt of that. So we agree on, on a price in, say, a year. city is going to bear the brunt of that. So we agree on, on a price in, say, a year or into 2023, 2024, but when we're building the road in '25, it may be additional million or two million to us. And so I, I guess, I'm talking out loud, if you can help give me direction. We've had other projects where it's been put onto the developer and they had a timeframe, time constraint toward this is going to be all on our, on the city of Fairview.
So typically, when that cost is considered, it's, it's priced out and there's an escalator put in it for considering time. And there's usually, so to speak, fat built into the estimate to, to take care of that or to cover that. And so I think that's how it would be handled in the development agreement. And that's what would be before you when the development agreement was considered. What the actual cost is, what the likely overage is, and cost increases over time.
That's fair. And, and I don't want to take away from the tremendous offering of the improvements through there, but I just feel like it's a heavy risk of our end if we're managing that process in the backside and they're not in control of it.
Well, and frankly, the development agreement could specify who's at risk for that increase.
And then it...
Whether it's shared or, I mean, that's, that's something that's typically put in the development agreement or could be put in the development agreement.
And if we put a time constraint on it, you couldn't get a building permit or a CO until the road improvements are done, and then it's up to us to get the road improvements done. And so that just, there's a lot of moving parts.
I think that's what the, what the development proposes, correct, that the roads have to be complete?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Oh, the, the plan, don't, don't the roads have to be complete before you get a building permit? You, you've conceded to that, I think, in the plan, correct?
Uh, no.
No? Okay. Tell me about that. I thought I heard that mentioned before, when, when one of you were speaking.
No, I think, I think, I think Mr. Henry was referring to the, the roads within the development to be complete, but our contribution to the city project we would, we would make.
I, I think as part of the development agreement, as far as the connection to Northwest, Northwest, you could, Mr. Butler, you could put that in the development agreement. When those, how many building permits they could get until that road is either constructed or in the process of being constructed? I think that could be addressed in the development agreement.
Then do we get sued for, for performance when we don't deliver the road? Or, you know, it just, it's a lot of, I don't know. Just trying to wrap my head around it.
I think anytime, anytime the city obligates itself to, to build a road or enters into a joint development agreement to construct a road, I think it, the city does have legal obligations, as does the developer.
If I'm not mistaken, too, when we had the conversation with the engineer for the 96 Northwest Highway improvements, even though we voted on the engineering, the plan and everything, it was stated we voted to pay them $135 or something like that, that they had requested for that. But then when asked, the city, when we asked the city manager if there's any, anything with other developers' signatures on it, he said there is not. And this project could end up costing what they said, $3 million to $3.5 million. We still do not have anything in writing from anyone. And to make a decision tonight on a master development plan is wrong if we don't know how much they're going to put forth, if anything. It needs to be in writing first thing, to know what they're willing to do to help our people, is my opinion.
Yes, ma'am. And that's exactly what the development agreement will do, is specify costs, timing, responsibility, security, to make sure in the event the developer doesn't perform, city gets the money, city has the developer's money to perform. I mean, there's a, a whole host of elements that go into that kind of a development agreement. It's very routine, you know, in other jurisdictions. So it's not something D.R. Horton is shying away from. Their home buyers want a beautiful three-lane road on Northwest Highway in order to get now, get into and out of their homes. So my client is absolutely, has a vested interest in making sure that that road is widened and accommodates not only current traffic, but accommodates their traffic. And importantly, the traffic impact study is the basis of what is the developer's obligation, how much of that road really does need to be widened to accommodate their project, but they're willing to even contribute more than that. So it's, it's the next step in the development process under this ordinance that's in front of you tonight. If the, if the plan's approved tonight, the next step is to move toward that development agreement.
Okay. But what I'm saying is we don't have it now. I don't want to make a decision without proof they're going to do what they say.
It's a condition of approval, therefore they can't do anything unless they do it.
Correct. But I'm not going to vote for something that I don't have in front of me that I can guarantee is going to be done if we approve this. Because once we approve this master development plan, what grounds do we have that they're going to do exactly what they say they're going to do?
Right.
Are they going to put everything in the agreement and agree with everything that we feel they should agree with? I just don't feel like we need to give them grounds to move forward without knowing exactly what it's going to be in that development agreement, in my opinion.
Well, that's a real stalemate. That's a real stalemate because the developer has to know what it's going to cost. They have to know that this plan is going to be approved. They can't jump out in front of this plan and prepare a development agreement, get under contract with the city for a project that's not yet approved. So it's a sequential, step-by-step incremental process of approval, commitments, guarantees, assurances, so that the public's not harmed. And that's, that's what you're trying to accomplish and that's what, that's what you do. And there's, there's formulas for making sure that that happens. I'm not aware of the history here in Fairview in terms of developers not honoring their development agreement, but you've got a good attorney here. I've worked with Mr. Carter in another jurisdiction. He understands development agreements. He's very hard on my other client regarding a development agreement. They're living up to it. We don't, we don't have any concern about that. And ultimately, this board takes that vote. You take that vote. So if you're, if you're, if you're ultimately uncomfortable with how that roadway work is being ironed out on paper, you can vote no at that time.
Do we get to vote on the development agreement?
Absolutely.
Because I was aware that nothing else came back before us if, once we approve a master development plan unless there's a major change.
That's, that's, that's just not true.
Okay. So when would that happen?
The development agreement?
Mm-hmm.
So if you were, if this board were to approve the plan, the amendments in the master plan, the developer would then finalize their plan. They would go out and figure out this road and they would measure and engineer it. They would bid it and they would get the costs. Then we would prepare a development agreement based on it. The development agreement would be put on the agenda and you would have your say about the development agreement.
Also, the comment about the, the people who are going to move into these homes wanting a beautiful three-lane road, they're not here yet. We are. This isn't about them. This isn't about y'all. It's about the people here now. So you can't make that statement. It's what we want.
Mr. Carter, you mentioned earlier that we, the board, at the current time, did not have the ability to seek changes to the plan, what we may or may not want. When would that time be?
So this, the zoning, the underlying zoning was put in place in 2008. They were entitled under that plan, under the zoning, they're entitled to 750 homes. So they've come back with 525 homes. It is not the purview of the BOC or the Planning Commission to get into negotiations regarding the exact number of homes. You can only deal with what's in front of you because otherwise it's contract zoning. It's illegal in the state of Tennessee. You can't, can't start horse, you know, you can build that, we'll approve it if you build this or approve that. And so what we need to be focusing on tonight, and I'll, and I'll support the board no matter how they vote, but the discussion we need to be having is how this plan, if it, if we don't believe it complies with the 2008 approval or city standards, then we need to be stating what those standards are. Because if a suit is filed, then I will be charged with defending the city. And the defense is going to be, have to be based on why your decision was not arbitrary or capricious. And so that's what we need to be focusing on, not the timing of the development agreement. Because it's clear, and the law is clear in this regard, and it's standard, standard practice, the development agreements come after. We don't require developers to bid and engineer an entire roadway section before they have their approval, because that alone costs hundreds of thousands of dollars. So we make the plan conditional on the development agreement, which will come before you.
All right.
Mr. Easter, hold on.
So my answer is, we, we don't get into negotiating numbers of houses. If, but if you don't like this, if you don't believe this plan meets our standards or meets the zoning ordinance that was passed in 2008 with regards to this property, we need to be talking about how it doesn't, doesn't comply or meet those standards. That, that's what your denial needs to be based on, if you're going to deny it.
Well, my, my...
Hold on, hold on. Mr. Easter, I have a question, please. If your variance is denied for the 58 critical lots and you have to reduce by 58 lots, how will that affect this?
Variance for the, I'm not clear that it's a variance, honestly, Mayor, but...
Well, it was stated as a variance earlier, so it, it either is or is not.
All right. So if the variance for the 58 lots changes, then it would be 58 less lots, or the plan would have to be reworked.
Just, just for reference, the, the slopes and hill sides ordinance that requires, if it's greater than 15% slopes, three-acre lot size minimum, and if it's greater than 20% slopes, five-acre lot size minimum. And what has been happening is that any applicant that has that has gone to the Board of Zoning Appeals for, for review against, for that variance. And, and maybe the board can, can grant that variance. I'm not sure.
I believe the way the former staff tried to explain it to us in the beginning was that our whole site is over three to five acres. And because it's a PUD, and there are existing slopes, pre-site development plans of slopes of 15% to 20%, that we had to denote these as a critical lot. And that the, the, the statement they gave us to put on the plan doesn't, the bottom of it state that it is a variance from the minimum lot size. Because after the site development plans, those lots would be less than three to five acres. But currently, the whole site is far greater than three to five acres. I could be completely misrepresenting that and miss, not remembering the conversation correctly. But if the variance for those 58, the variance to not consider those critical lots and could, could consider them undevelopable because of those slopes, then there would be, we would be 58 lots less on the project.
And that wouldn't affect you moving forward? You'd just reduce it by 58 more lots?
No, we would try to figure out where those 58 lots would be located on the site that did not have those areas of 15% to 20% slopes.
Which would be another major change?
No, ma'am, because we would not be changing lot sizes and we would not be changing points of access.
Well, Mr. Carter, I'll go back to finishing my, my thoughts about the ingress and egress on Highway 96. If me, as a board member, chooses not to vote for this project tonight because in 2008 it was approved to come out on the Highway 96, and it was city staff without the board's approval that had the developer change that, where does that leave us? And I know I'm just one vote, but I just can't imagine a subdivision this large not coming out on a state highway when it can.
Number one, I think you could make, I think you could make that a condition that they had an access to, to state Route 96 or whatever it is, number one. Number two...
We could do that tonight? Because earlier you said we couldn't.
I think you could make it a condition of approval, yeah. Mr. Henry may disagree and he can speak to it. But the second thing I'd say is that I, I wasn't here with prior staff and I'm not going to throw prior staff under the bus. And a city speaks through its board of commissioners, it speaks through its planning commissioner, it speaks through its staff, and staff are considered agents of the city. And so if those agents made representations that people relied on, then I think the city could potentially have liability based on those representations. So if, if, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure, I'm not exactly sure, your, your question, Commissioner Johnson, I mean, I...
I, you just basically told me you can't defend it, but that's still not going to change my opinion because I just, I just think it's crazy that if this were to get approved, that it's going to dump out onto roads that we're going to have to improve, whether it be us funded, them funded, or a combination of both.
I understand.
When there's, they're building an interior road that can come right out on the state route anyway, but that's just me.
So I understand that.
So should staff have made a decision without coming before the board about that change?
I think staffs in all cities work with the developer when they make, when they make their proposed changes, and they rely on staff to assist them, knowing what, knowing what the long-range plans of the city are. So no, I don't, I can't find fault with the staff with...
I'm not trying to find fault with them. I'm just asking if that was appropriate for them to make a, a large decision, which actually changed it from a minor change to a major. So they made...
I think the city has...
They made a decision without coming before us on a major change.
I, I think it put the developer and the city in a bad position, yes.
But, but staff is the educated professionals who know, they know better than us.
Yes.
And so they're, they're going to review from a traffic standpoint.
I mean, you have an engineer and a planner and an attorney and a wastewater person and, you know, all the, all of your staff, that you hire them because they're experts in specific areas, specific fields. And so you, you rely on your staff to, to meet with developers and other people in the city that are proposing plans, yes.
Mayor, just a quick note, Mr. Carter, we have talked about this prior, but I'm still having a hard time. If, if the base zoning was R20, R20 fits in a box. The box, these are your parameters for R20. If you meet that, go forward R20. But a PUD has always been such a variation. It allows for the applicant to request variances to the traditional standards. And traditionally, it allows the city to, to also request various changes such as the road improvements and things. And so I'm having, if, if the language in the, in the book says it has to be treated as if it was a new, go through the entire new process as it originally went through, then how is the RMA PUD an underlying boxed zone, I guess? Is that...
I don't want to not answer your question, Commissioner Butler, but I, I'm not, I'm not a proponent of this subdivision and I'm not against the subdivision. My job is to advise the city as to what's required legally. So I would, I think it would be appropriate for the developer's attorney to ask that question. But, but anything that I say, no matter what your decision, there's likely to be litigation. And you do not want me to be a witness, one way or the other. So if Mr. Henry has a response, then he should, he should, I would, I would direct you to Mr. Henry because I think he can answer that question.
Mr. Henry, if that makes sense, the PUD, the RMA PUD is, has so many different variations and, and it's not a defined zoning ordinance in our regulations. And so, in fact, I don't think that you, we would see an RMA PUD submitted today. We would see a single-family designation and then you'd have some multi-families in different areas. So I'm having a hard time understanding how the RMA is a box that we have to be confined to when, if it was a new PUD submittal today, which it says, it's supposed to go back to the original submissions, a new PUD submittal today would be open to all sorts of criteria and review and assessment if it came in front of us as a new project. And so if the language says it's treated the same way as if it was a new project, I'm trying to figure out how RMA is being, RMA PUD is creating its own new box in this instance.
So the PUD is an overlay district, overlay district. And I think, I think even in your new zoning code, I think it calls them...
POD.
Plant, POD, planned overlay. You got rid of the word unit. It's now planned overlay development.
Sounds fancy, right?
District. But it's the same thing. It's an overlay. And the underlying base zone is really not... And the underlying base zone is really not important, because the plan, not this plan, but because of the plan that was approved, controls the development of the property. So the underlying base zone is rather irrelevant. And just real quick, just to back up a second, Nashville, and I used to work at the Planning Department in Nashville, their overlays could apply, you could have a commercial overlay on a residential base zone piece of property, and it didn't make sense, you know? Commercial PUD or industrial PUD over agricultural zoned base zone, didn't make sense at all. So in 1998, they stopped doing that. As of 1998, you can no longer put an industrial or commercial PUD over residential property or that kind of thing. So the critical thing is that it's the plan itself, that's what controls. And what's in front of you, my understanding is what's in front of you has been checked against your current requirements, and it meets those current requirements, or a PUD.
The recorded plat is the overlay, correct?
Plan, it's in, just for, I don't need to be, I don't need to be, we're not talking about plats, there's no plat, there's not a subdivision plat. This is purely a plan of development, a preliminary plan of development.
So that is your zoning?
Correct.
So any deviation from that, our regulations or ordinance say it has to be treated as a new submittal, more or less, is that not correct?
And that's why we're here. We're here because of the deviation is so significant, it rises to the level of an amendment and comes before this body, as opposed to being less significant and letting the Planning Commission decide it.
But that goes back to my question, if it was a base zoning, it has a box. There is no box, it's your plan. And so if you're changing, you can change this, but you can't change that, or we don't have to meet this, we meet that, you know?
You have PUD criteria, your ordinance has PUD criteria in there.
Yep, that allows for variation, and that's what the PUD is. When you're trying to get a project that doesn't fit the R-20 box, you try and do an R-20 PUD, where you can have smaller lot sizes, you can have clusters, you can have conservation.
Right, so yeah, the whole purpose of the overlay, whether POD or PUD, is to allow flexibility in design, site design, you know, which is what you can see on this screen. So you're not artificially bound by everything having to be 20,000 square foot minimum, 8,000 square foot minimum, RMA, but you don't have that now. But you don't have those limitations. It can be very flexible, and that's what you have here. You have a townhome section, which you couldn't do if it were R-20, you know? So the flexibility of site design is the benefit of doing a PUD, and that's what you have.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Would you like just a little more information on the removal of the connection to 96? So when we were approached, as I said, last year about the removal to contribute, the reason for that was that city staff knew that we were going to be contributing dollars to improvements on Highway 96. They knew that they had a project in Northwest Highway that I guess they wanted to get done.
The fire department?
I don't know who that was. But we were approached about making revision to the plan, and then taking those dollars that would have been at the entrance. And then they asked us, would you also be willing to contribute more to Northwest Highway? And that was the general agreement, was that we were willing to remove that connection, we were willing to take those dollars, we were willing to contribute more dollars also to help contribute to the city project. And so that's why, that's the genesis of that removal of the Highway 96 connection. Now, if this board feels that the Highway 96 connection should be there, I think we can do that. The one thing we have is that there are significant dollars for those improvements that have to be made at that connection. We can still contribute to Northwest Highway, it just won't be as much. Hope that makes sense. Thank you.
On what was stated as 10, I believe I'm correct about this, 10-201.1, PUD consistently, or sorry, PUD consistency with comp plan 2040 medium density. Could someone speak to that?
So the sheet I handed you out is a copy straight from your comprehensive plan that talks about medium density.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
So the sheet I just handed everyone is straight from the comp plan that talks about the new residential medium neighborhood, which is what this property is designated. If you scroll down to conventional plan unit development options, it talks about narrow mix of residential buildings, single-family homes, it talks about small lot options, four-dwelling units per acre gross density, shallow to deep setbacks, up to two and a half stories, and civic open space. That's what we're providing, and we are less dense than what the comp plan recommends as a maximum density for the project. In that handout also is a map of where the property is located, copy of the framework plan that shows the land use designation, as well as the zoning verification letter, and some of the other information we've been provided throughout this process from staff.
Mayor, in fairness, I think it also speaks to the use around it. And so the 2040 plan, it also says conventional, two lots per acre is acceptable use for new residential medium. And with direction of 2040 plan, over the last several years since 2040 plan, the density average in Fairview has probably gone from about two, well, I have a chart, an Excel chart somewhere, but 2.3, 2.4 units per acre to about 1.2, 1.3. And so in the direction of the 2040 plan, I feel like the density impact has drastically dropped. And so, and that's with residential medium in place. And so around you is R-20, R-40, there's an RMA off of Highway 96, you probably have that drawing in here.
In fairness, we have an existing RMA zoning.
RMA PUD.
RMA, correct. RMA PUD is what we've been told is the underlying zoning for the project, or the zoning for the project.
Yeah, that goes back to our discussion earlier.
I believe me.
You wouldn't even submit an RMA PUD today for your application.
I understand.
It wouldn't follow.
So I guess my question is, in reference to 10-201.1, on the PUD consistency with the comp plan for medium density, since we had to bring this back as a major change or whatever...
Yes, ma'am.
Would we not have to follow that rule?
I think the complication is that, I think the developer believes it follows a 2040 plan, but if this board finds that does not follow the 2040 plan, 2040 plan and denies it, we still have the 2008 zoning that's in place, where they're entitled to build 700 and some homes. And that's the, I mean, that's the problem. This was set in motion in 2008, so we can say it doesn't comply with the 2040 plan, and you deny it tonight, but then we still have the plan that was passed in 2008, which if this doesn't meet the 2040 plan, the one in 2008 surely doesn't. But they're entitled to that zoning. That zoning was put in place in 2008. They have property rights, the landowner does, not talking about the developer, but the Fairview resident that owns this land currently, I assume he's a resident, maybe he's not.
I don't think so.
I don't know.
If the 2008 plan was built, it would still have to meet the new stormwater regulations, new construction standards for roads and street design. So there would probably be some massive changes from the waterways and setbacks in areas and that, so.
Sure, because zoning is different than, zoning is different than development rights. So development rights are when we start talking about vested rights. The zoning stays in place. Once it's zoned, it potentially stays in place forever unless...
Unless the owner decides to...
Unless the owner comes in and asks for a zoning change. Now, if the city were to try to downzone the property, the city would get sued, and they would lose that lawsuit. The city can't unilaterally take away someone's property rights under the U.S. Constitution, so...
Unless Williamson County.
Property rights work, property rights work both ways. You have the landowner's property rights, and you have the neighbor's property rights. And so, you know, the old adage, it's your rights end where mine begin.
Mayor, may I take a stab at trying to answer your question as well?
Yes, sir.
I'm now looking at that section that you're citing, and the consistency with the comprehensive plan and area development plans, the task of determining that is the Planning Commission. And of course, they've recommended in favor of this. So we submit that when the Planning Commission recommended approval of this, in their review and consideration of the PUD, they generally, shall generally consider, so it's a general consideration, those three things, and one of which you just pointed out. Consistency with the current effective comprehensive plan, is it likely to be compatible with development permitted under the general development provisions of the zoning ordinance, and then will not significantly interfere with the use and enjoyment of other land in the vicinity. So we believe the Planning Commission and their determination and recommendation to this body affirmed that this PUD satisfies that consistency provision.
Ms. Jones, what was the vote on the Planning Commission for this project?
I'm not 100% sure, but I...
Four to four, with the tie being broken by the chairman.
Yes, I think it was five to four.
Ended up being five to four. So in fairness, it was almost a split vote, but by the last vote, it went over the edge. So it wasn't, like, unanimous, I just want to point that out.
So from everything that I've gathered tonight, even though it was voted for an RMA PUD, and that was done in 2008, even then, there were plenty of people, plenty of citizens against it, but it passed. There has been plenty of time for this project to have happened before now. A lot of changes have been made in Fairview in the last few years that have made it where it's almost impossible for us to be able to provide everything that this many people need in Fairview. So we can't get out of this because it was done back in 2008, it was zoned in 2008, when we didn't have this issue. Fairview didn't have all these developments popping up all over us. Is there not something we can do for the people here? So we're the ones that are going to, all of us are the ones who are going to be impacted so negatively, mentally, physically, everything, because of the size of this subdivision or this development.
So when property is rezoned, the property keeps zoning. I believe there may have been an earlier case with Cox Pike, and there was litigation over that, that was before my time. I think that was one where property had been rezoned. And I think the subdivision started. What I'm telling you is that I think if you're going to vote against it, then you need to have a reason why you're going to vote against it, why this plan does not comply with the underlying zoning or other city standards. And I think the mayor has talked about the 2040 plan. I think the issue with that is if this doesn't get approved, then we go back to 2008 plan, and the density with that plan is even greater. So that's what they'll be back with next. But if you can tie your denial to city standards, or the fact that it somehow doesn't comply with underlying zoning in a very specific way, then I think you could vote no. And so that's, I think the conversation we've been having about the 2040 plan is a good conversation, so. But your denial can't be arbitrary or capricious.
Any other discussion? All right, we have a motion on the floor to deny. Commissioner Fisher Street, Commissioner Hall. I just want to let everyone know, a vote of aye doesn't mean pass, it means deny. So I just want everybody to be clear on that, okay? Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Street? Aye. Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson? Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
One second. Item 9A2, passes for denial, 5-0. We will be recessed for 15 minutes. We will call our meeting back to order. Item number 9B, ordinance 2023-05, rezoning of 2065 Fairview Boulevard. We will now open the public hearing. If anybody would like to speak on this item, please come forward.
Not everybody wants.
Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Item B2, 9B2, second and final reading of ordinance 2023-05, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, by rezoning two acres of property located at 2065 Fairview Boulevard, consisting of Williamson County tax map, 042HC, parcel 012.00, from RS40, single-family residential, to C1, commercial zoning. Property owner, Southeast Investment Partners.
Thank you.
We have a first and a second, any discussion? Any discussion? Ms. Jones?
Hold on, is there a member here representing? Making sure.
Thank you for staying with us.
Yeah.
Happy to be here. Gray Stubblefield, I'm with R&amp;M Property Group, who is under contract with the property owner, and happy to answer any questions you have.
Yay wawas. Go ahead.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Street?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Item 9, I'm sorry, yeah. Item 9B passes 5-0. Item 9C, Old Business, second and final reading of ordinance 2023-07, an ordinance to amend Title 14, Chapter 4, City Stormwater Ordinance for the City of Fairview, Tennessee. City Engineer, Ms. Sarah Totti.
This is the second read of this. Ordinance 2023-07 proposes to change the language in Point 14405, Number 20, located in the Stormwater Ordinance slope grading standards to accomplish the same intent as the original language, but add more specis-, specificity. Sorry about that. That's my staff report.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Have a first and a second. Any discussion? Ms. Jones?
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Street?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item 10A, under New Business, Resolution 33-23, a resolution of the City of Fairview accepting the lowest bid proposal for mowing and trimming services and authorizing the city manager to execute related documents and contracts for services.
Move for approval. Second.
Well, okay.
We have discussion now that's on the floor.
That's fine. Ms. Jones, would you like to explain the process?
Sure. We put out for the bid, to accept bids for the mowing and trimming of the city properties. We had six people bid on the project. After we opened the bids, Mr. Doherty went with the lowest responsible bidder, which was Greenway Landscaping. They are the ones who currently are doing the city properties. They won the bid, passed time around, and they were the, there was one other that was low, was lower, but it was not a responsible bidder. It was, it was a significant difference, and Mr. Doherty chose to just stick with Greenway Landscaping.
So he figured out the bid was- That's percutated.
Yes, it was, it was under, but it was, it was not calculated correctly. It was not submitted correctly. It wasn't broken down by percuté the way it was supposed to have been.
Mr. Carter, are you final with that? As long as he has that documented.
As far as the bidding?
As far as not going with, I think what he's asking, as far as not going with the lowest bid.
I haven't, so I haven't read the, the bid document, but typically when you, you bid, typically you put a statement in that you're not obligated to go with the lowest bid, but the best bid. So I, I can't speak as to the, as to how Mr. Doherty prepared the bid form and accepted the bids, but if, if, if the BOC determines that this is the, the best provider or purveyor of this service, and that's what staff recommends, and I'm assuming Mr. Doherty correctly bid the project.
And in years past, it's been both of those in the same sentence, lowest and best bid.
Well, the lowest is not always the best bid, and the, the best bid is not always the lowest, so.
I, I'll stand by my motion.
Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Street?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item 10A passes 5-0. Item 10B, ordinance 2023-08, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the City of Fairview, Tennessee by deannexing 99.33 acres of property located at 7252 Northwest Highway, consisting of Williamson County tax map, 021, parcel 058.00. Property owner, June Warden.
Motion to deny.
Any discussion?
I had spoken with Ms. Warden at the Planning Commission meeting and told her I didn't know how the vote would go tonight for this. I am going to support not allowing it to be deannexed, but during commissioner comments, I'm going to add to our next agenda, an item allowing her to have the, the zoning that she's looking for, the agricultural zoning that I spoke of.
On that, the process, and Ms. Totti can speak more, but the process would be for a rezoning application to be received by the city and then run through the normal process. If the, if-
I'm going to make, I'll make a motion as part of that, is to waive any fees that would, that a citizen would incur in that.
And I think it could be sta-, uh, commissioner-sponsored or commissioner-supported, and the commission could waive the, the commission could waive the fee if that's what the commission decides to do. If they just need to direct staff to do that. But I, I don't think we need to do that tonight.
Right, yeah, I'm just going to add it to the next agenda. That's-
I want to make a statement. For the record, I am the granddaughter of the property owner. I will never benefit financially from the deannexation of the property. As a commissioner, I am going to continue with the discussion so I can provide facts. I am in my good conscience going to abstain from the voting. This is the most, most ethical way to be able to provide the information I collected before being elected as a city commissioner. As a working farm, annexation is still to this day, when you force an annexation on a property owner, you need to annex it according to the current property use. I know we have stipulations as RS40, but I feel that that needs to be possibly amended because if it's right there in front of you as a, as a working farm and it's so many acres, it should be deemed agriculture. The property owner did not receive any extra benefits when annexed into the city. You cannot die, deny emergency and police services to the citizens of 37062 due to an agreement with Williamson County. This deannexation does not include the parcel with the owner's house. Therefore, the owner is still going to receive any and all services from the City of Fairview if needed. The state of Tennessee is not fond of donut holes. Pieces of annexed property that surround a large number of unannexed property. Due to the, the decisions over the past three years, the annexations of the parcels on Northwest Highway have created a major donut hole. Deannexation of this parcel of 99 acres will open the donut hole while keeping the connecting properties within the city limits. The City of Fairview will only be out the current city property tax amount of $591. This is not a lot to the city, but it is to a citizen on social security. Approving the deannexation will only set a precedence, in my opinion, of honesty, transparency, and will start to show some empathy for the citizens of Fairview.
Mayor, just for reference, it was a negative recommendation by the Planning Commission of 1 to 7, the state, state statute references, deannexation only being brought on by the staff or by referendum, and the staff being, when we're unable to provide the level of services that we agreed to upon, on the annexation.
Excuse me, you cannot speak during, during the meeting. Go ahead.
I cannot find anywhere where, in a, from a planning or a long-term vision, a deannexation is a, is a proper or a correct path for, for the city. And even by state statute references, why you would or why staff would have to, like, parcel or locations like Memphis that can no longer provide the services to certain areas, aren't receiving property taxes, and would deannex certain areas, but I, I feel like, and, and as far as future zoning, I don't think we should give any special privilege to, to a board family member and waive fees. We set a terrible precedent. I think it needs to go through the proper process, like any other regular applicant would have to.
To make myself clear again, the property asking to be deannexed is a working farm. It is not the property owner's house, her home. We're asking for deannexation due to the fact that it will help-
Commissioner Street, my point of, point of order, Commissioner Street, are you speaking as a commissioner? Are you speaking as a citizen? Or are you speaking as a relative of, of your grandmother?
I am, I said in the beginning that I am in good conscience going to abstain from the voting.
Okay, if you're going to abstain from the vote, I would recommend that you step down from the dais and then ask for permission to speak as a citizen or advocate for your grandmother. I think it's improper for you to speak as a commissioner on something that you have a conflict with.
I have no financial gain whatsoever-
But it's a family member, and so the, the-
Correct, but legally, I can say in my good conscience.
Okay.
And I am not going to vote. I just want to make sure everyone has the facts, because the PC did not have the facts.
I'm, I'm not saying you shouldn't deliver the facts. I'm saying that if you're not going to vote and you have a conflict, it should be delivered from the floor rather than as a commissioner. That's my legal opinion. Take it or leave it.
Okay, I will go and ask for permission to speak.
Mayor called a question.
Then that takes us straight to the vote. Can you, Ms. Jones, can you call the roll, please?
I wasn't done with discussion or anything.
That's okay, when somebody calls question, we go straight to the vote. Ms. Jones?
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Street?
I abstain.
Mayor Anderson?
I, I'm going to clarify, aye is a vote to deny. Correct?
I apologize, I did not hear whether the motion was a motion to approve or a motion to deny.
It was a motion to deny.
Okay, so an aye is for denial, yes.
Okay.
And so I've heard, Mr., Commissioner Butler, did you mean to deny?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Hall, you meant to deny? Who else voted so far? Commissioner Johnson.
Yes, sir.
So that's three denials so far.
An aye for denial for me.
Can, can I ask for some clarification on something because?
When called a question is called, it's straight to the vote and we move on. You can't move, you can't do that.
Actually-
Actually, no.
Okay.
Mr. Carter?
I, I want to just refer to Mr. Carter. I believe a call for the question has to have a second, and then it has to have a two-thirds majority.
Everyone had an opportunity to have the floor to speak. Some people spoke twice.
I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with any of that, but I will state for the record that I do believe the Planning Commission vote was six to one to one to one. I believe it was six against the annex in it, one for it, one recusal, and one member absent.
And what does that have to do with anything?
I think it was stated that it was seven to one.
Went one to seven, my apologies, one to six.
Let me respond to, I think, what Commissioner Johnson's getting at. So the motion, I think, under Roberts' rules is, I understand the motion to be to end debate and move it, move it to vote, and some people refer that to calling the question. So a second is needed, and it has to pass by two-thirds vote.
I only did it for 16 years, people.
I'd appreciate if you addressed the chair before we're speaking.
And so I think Mr. Butler made, that's, I think we need to void, void the vote, number one. Mr. Butler made a motion, and so the, the question for the chair would be, is there a second? And if there is, then you would, there's no debate on that kind of motion that Mr. Butler made. If there's a second, then it requires two-thirds vote. Since there's four of you, three would be two-thirds vote.
A second. Ms. Jones?
Call the vote now. This is a vote for the question to be called. So if you want the question to be called, and then we'll have to vote on the question. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
I'm confused. This is the vote for only, the question only.
This is the vote to the call of question.
Call the question, yes, sir.
Aye.
Commissioner Street?
Abstain.
Commissioner Johnson?
No.
Okay, so the question passes. Now we go to vote.
So it carries by two-thirds vote.
Yes.
So now we go to the vote, whether you're going to deannex it or not.
And the, the motion on the, on the floor is to deny the deannexation. So now we're going to vote aye to deny, nay to approve.
I want to make sure that was properly seconded. So who, who seconded that? Ms. Jones probably already has it down, but-
The first motion to deny was Vice Mayor Butler and Commissioner Johnson second.
Okay, and so are we, you affirmed that motion in the second? Okay, that's where we are then, we're on the question.
I'm going to recuse myself from the vote.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
10B, the motion to deny passes 3, 1, with one recusal. Item 10C, Resolution 34-23, a resolution of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, Board of Commissioners, adopting a policy on deannexation.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a first and a second. I'm going to read the resolution. Resolution 34-23, a resolution of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, Board of Commissioners, adopting a policy on deannexation. Whereas Tennessee law only permits cities to initiate deannexation through referendum or action by the Board of Commissioners, and whereas the Board of Commissioners does not believe deannexation to be the, in the best interest of the City of Fairview at this period in time. And whereas the City of Fairview desires to state its policy regarding deannexation, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the City of Fairview, Tennessee as follows. The Board of Commissioners of the City of Fairview, Tennessee states that it is its policy until further action of the Board of Commissioners that it will not consider deannexation of property from the City of Fairview, the public good demanding it.
On this, deannexation to the province of the BOC, so that's usually where they're generated from. In this, in this instance, I believe a citizen approached staff and/or the city manager about deannexing the property. Staff, up until now, there is no policy in Spring Hill. So if this board is not interested in having these types of matters on the agenda in the future, this will give a clear signal of the policy that deannexations aren't to be considered by the city currently. You can always change that because it's just a policy. So if in the future this board wants to deannex property, you would, you would, you, you would change the policy and consider a deannexation. So, but deannexations within the province of this, of the Board of Commissioners to decide. And so hence the policy that the mayor asked me to draft. If you pass it, then these items won't be added to the agenda in the future by staff.
Ms. Jones?
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Street?
Nay.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item 10C passes 4-1. Item 11, communication from the mayor and commissioners. Commissioner Hall?
Just, nobody's here, it's up to us few, but I thank y'all for staying here and thank you for being here tonight. And thank everybody that did come, it was good debate, and I want to thank everybody and all the board for the hard work they've done.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Thank you for everyone coming out tonight, nothing further, mayor.
Commissioner Fisher Street?
I just want to make it, you know, be known that every decision that we make up here will affect people for years to come, including decisions made in 2004, decisions made in 2008, decisions made in 2015, 2020, 2021, 2022, and 2023. Every decision up here affects the citizens of Fairview in some way. So when you make a vote, please remember that we are up here working for our people of Fairview. And that needs to be maintained.
Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, mayor. Ms. Jones, if you would, on the next agenda, put the Warden property on there for rezoning, and if you would get with her, whomever is handling that estate, to fill out the paperwork.
I would have to go to the planning commission first.
It'll have to be submitted through IDT, and then staff will have to review it. That doesn't take that long, but it does have to go to the planning commission, then two reads with the Board of Commissioners.
I'm not, I'm not sure that has to be done, since we, since I'm asking for it to be done. It may not pass.
I still think we need to follow our zoning ordinance in for.
State statute.
State statute, thank you.
Especially since commissioners and family members involved, we want to make sure.
And so I do think it has to go to the planning commission, they make a recommendation, and then it's a, it's a, it's a change in zoning, so it requires two readings, there'll also be a public hearing.
I'm perfectly fine with however y'all need to do it, just letting you know, I will, I will sponsor it. It may not pass, but I will, I will support it. I agree with my fellow commissioner that if the city forcefully annexed this property in the first place, and it should have come in, that was, I'll take the credit for that, that was my mistake. It should have come in as a farm when it was being used as a farm, and it's still used as a farm to this day. So I will take responsibility for that, and that's why I'll see to it that it gets on a future agenda.
I know that it's late, and I know that a lot of people had to leave, but I really appreciate everybody coming out tonight. They, we had a lot of good discussion. I feel good about the outcome, and I just appreciate everybody's input and willingness to come out and speak. I want to say happy birthday to Sarah Todd. Oh, wait a minute, is it your birthday still? Best birthday ever, oh man. And last week was Public Works Appreciation Week, so I know that after the storms that we've had in Fairview, I was able to go out with the Land Trust Easement Group on all-train vehicles and go through the park. I had no idea the amount of trees that have, that have come down from the storms that we've had recently. And I just want to thank Keith and Justin and the Public Works Group that, you know, they got out there and cleared the trails so that our citizens could enjoy the trails and the park as quickly as possible after the storms. And, you know, just like I always say, let's just keep our community beautiful and help pick up trash and not throw it out. Thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn?